Good evening. The Board will now convene a meeting of the Little Elm ISD Board of Trustees. Open session, a regular meeting on July 21st at 6:30 PM at the Little Elm High School Lecture Hall. I am Delian English, President of Little Elm ISD Board Trustees. On our behalf, I'd like to welcome all who are present and to our video viewers. While we're at it, let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my right is Ms. Leanna Harding, our Vice President, Trustee Cooper Biggess, Trustee Christopher Williams. To my left seated is Acting Superintendent Matthew Gutierrez, Trustee Alex Flores, our Secretary, Trustee Stephanie Gray, and Trustee Melissa Meyer. Also available is Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lynda Engel, as well as our Acting HR Director, Mrs. Cleo Heps. We also have available some of the other staff members who are also here, and we welcome them here also. The regular meeting. Call or order, open session in the lecture hall of Little Elm High School on 1900 Walker Lane, Little Elm, Texas 75068. Roll, please.
Mr. Christopher Williams?
Here.
Mr. Cooper Biggess?
Here.
Ms. Leanna Harding?
Here.
Mr. Delian English?
Here.
Mr. Matthew Gutierrez?
Here.
Mr. Alejandro Flores?
Here.
Ms. Melissa Meyer?
Here.
And Ms. Stephanie Gray?
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 For the public comments portion of the agenda, the Board will receive public comments and cards which are accepted. We usually accept those up until the board meeting time actually begins. Just some information about the cards which are currently available to everyone or anyone who would like to speak. One is we'd like to be management of people's time, so what we're going to do is keep that to about two to three minutes. I will hold time to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. One of the best practices is probably hold up a colored card, something like that, when you hit one minute out from your speaking time. And what I'll do is I'll hold maybe this little orange sign up so I don't interrupt anyone, just to let them know that you're one minute out from your speaking time available. Just some rules around the public comments. Any person wishing to address the Little Elm ISD Board of Trustees during the period deserved for public comments, the board meeting may sign up or be heard in accordance to policy BED local. It stipulates, "At regular meetings, the Board shall allot time to hear persons who desire to make comments to the Board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of meeting shall sign up with the presiding officer or decks his knee before the meeting begins and shall indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. Delegates of more than three persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the Board. No person shall be given during the public comment portion of a regular Board meeting -- sorry, no response should be given during the public comment portion of a regular Board meeting. The Board shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of meeting. The Board shall not tolerate disruption of the meeting by members of the audience. I have to at least one warning from the presiding officer. Any person continues to disrupt the meeting by his or her words or actions, the presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the person removed from the meeting." This comment period is not intended for presentation of complaints. The Board will only consider complaints that remain unresolved after they have been addressed through proper administrative channels and they have been placed in the Board Agenda. For further information, you can please contact Little Elm ISD Superintendent Office or give a call. Thank you. Moving on to citizen input, like I say, we'll have three minutes. I'll hold a card at the two-minute portion. I ask you please to speak clearly so everyone can hear what you're speaking about. And let me get my timer started.
Mr. English, would you like them to come to the front so they're on camera?
Yes, if you can, please. What was the best -- last time you had it over here, is that right?
(inaudible)
Come to the front here.
If they want to be on camera.
If they want to be on camera, yes. (inaudible) 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 We have about eight comments. Twenty-four comments. The first person, Michael, make sure I have this right. Porva?
Porva.
Porva? Mr. Porva, please.
For the sake of bees, I'd rather just stay back here if that's okay.
Okay, could you please stand up for us so everybody can hear you?
Sure. I also, I just prepared my statement so that I'm going along with those if you don't need it.
Okay.
I'm doing it from time to time.
All right, I'll put you in the block, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for letting me have the time enough to speak to you. There have been a lot of changes in recent weeks that have me and others in the community concerned. During the last election, new Board members were voted in based on, amongst other issues, transparency. The previous Board and central administration had a perceived lack of transparency and openness of information with the public. Now with a new Board, I do not yet perceive any improvement on this transparency. With three new Board members, changes were assured to follow, but the sheer number of departures from the district has me and others wondering, what is the Board's plan for filling so many positions in such a short period of time? The qualifications for the positions this district needs are numerous, and the candidates possessing these qualities and the caliber the district deserves are, at this time, going to be difficult to find. I, for one, would like to know who leadership at my campus, Lakeside Middle School, is going to be. I can see from the posted agenda that this is going to be discussed. I just hope that the details are going to be laid out clearly for the public during the closed session. For instance, with Mr. Winkler gone, who will take over the duties of overseeing the construction and renovation of Lakeside and Powell campuses? After seeing the process firsthand, this is a complicated and multifaceted project that needs an attention to detail of these buildings our students, parents, and community deserve. Personally, I worry about the details of this project and worry that corners may be cut. So my question is, what is the plan? We have multiple principals, assistant principals, and counselor positions to be filled, not to mention the central administration that our district needs to be successful. Will there be committees of staff and committee members to interview candidates? When, if so, and will this take place? And there are only 25 more workdays to get these positions filled before our learners arrive for the 2014-2015 school year. So my question and my comment is to the Board, I would like to know what your plan is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. (applause) Next up, Mr. Tom Parker.
Yes.
Please.
And...
You can stand up for us, are you?
I just really want to address you all, if that's okay.
Please.
My name's Tom Parker, and I'm a retired businessman. Two years ago, Ms. Evans was kind enough to let me come and teach some business classes here at Little Elm High School. One thing that has shocked me has been the amount of turnover, both at the staff level and the teaching, the teachers that have left. I know you all have a hiring process and recommendations, but I think that it is extremely critical for the continuity of the high school for you to consider hiring somebody to turn up in. Mr. Clint Miller was the direct supervisor of me this past year, and I strongly urge you to consider his resume and his relationship that he has with the teaching, the community, as well as the students. I intend to go and do this for two or three years. I remember that I'm back this fall is because of all the changes that have been made and my concern for the high school students. And I can assure you that if Mr. Miller is put in charge, that he has all the attributes to run the high school and to run the schools as Gerald said, and he will have the support of the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
That's right.
(applause) Ms. Rebecca Brown?
Okay. Hi, I'm Rebecca Brown, and I have a child that is attending high school this year, and I also have a child that's still at Hackberry. My concern for right now, he's not supposed to high school, because I know that my child will be very successful in high school. I mean, he's had the great transition from kindergarten all the way through. My concern is for my child at Hackberry. I wanted to express my concerns and hopes for Hackberry Elementary. I know we have an opening for the principal position, and as a parent, I know you will hire the right candidate. Since the principal that was part of Hackberry from 2005 to 2011 left, Hackberry has struggled in many areas. As you can see, based on schoolbigger.com, Hackberry was ranked 180th out of 4,028 schools in 2011. Now, our school is ranked 2,330th out of 4,101 in the state of Texas. This year, Hackberry was ranked worse than 56.8% as elementary schools in Texas. Our test scores have dropped. Since 2011, our reading scores have went from 96.5 to 75.0, and math has gone from 99.5 to 64. The biggest concern for me is in regards to my child and the students at Hackberry and where the school stands. My child is part of the dual-language program, and this past year was the worst year of all. My child's Spanish has dropped this past year to language. Why? Well, the dual-language model was not followed and language instruction was inconsistent. The students were hardly ever given any tests in Spanish. The majority of the tests were in English. How are these students supposed to keep up with learning Spanish in dual language if we are not teaching them what they are supposed to know? Now, I feel that these students, including mine, will have a hard time this next school year due to the lack of Spanish teaching. What Hackberry needs is a solid principal that has experience in dual-language, bilingual, and a great tenure of being a principal. Our district has gone through many changes, and I feel that we need some consistency. We need a principal that will help teachers when they need it and will hold them accountable as well. We have lost too many teachers in Hackberry over the past couple of years that I know made a world of difference in learning, especially for my oldest. Thank you.
(applause) Mr. Chad Fisher.
I'll make this quick, I don't want to be tasered. (laughing) It's not the speed, it's what you say. Okay. My concern is project-based learning. I have two students in the school district that have had issues with project-based learning. They consistently earn grades for the students in their group, their groups have not pulled their weight. I'm tired of my kids overstressing about the projects and doing more than they should, these students earning better grades than they should. I understand that in the real world, there's a lot of project-based things in the workforce and things like that, but my child, my children are scared to give feedback to their teachers and feedback to their group about not doing what they should. And we really either need to throw it out or revisit it and reteach the teachers how to do project-based learning. Thank you.
(applause) Ms. Elise Macatee?
I have a pretty loud voice also, so I'll stay from back here. Thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight, Board and to Gutierrez. My topic is that specifically addressed to Mr. English, you campaigned on communication and transparency, and I emailed you twice since July the 7th with no acknowledgement or response. I'd like to read my email publicly. Dear Mr. English, I want to congratulate you on your election as President. However, that is not the only reason for my email. I am writing to follow up on a comment you made at a Board meeting several weeks ago. I like the idea of mobile meetings and feel that the Tribute would be a great place to have a meeting. Thank you for suggesting this. I can help you set this up if you would like. I know that our community is excited for the STEM school to open, and update on the construction and plans for our grand opening events would be welcomed by residents. Can you share your plan for the recruitment and replacement of the administrators, principals, teachers, and counselors that have left? If a search committee is formed, will people be able to volunteer? I look forward to your response. I had several follow-up questions that were forwarded, this was also later forwarded to the entire Board as well as, again, to Mr. English. My additional questions are, the high school is currently without a principal, two vice-principals, and three counselors. Can you share what steps are being taken to ensure there is leadership in place when school starts, as my daughter is an incoming freshman? Also, can high school parents get an update on the C2 offerings for classes and testings? That was the procedure put in place to help prep for SAT and ACT classes. We haven't heard anything about that. I've re-forwarded the emails stating that I hadn't received any sort of response and any response to those questions and concerns would be very welcome. I'm a parent, a taxpayer, constituent, and at least an acknowledgement would be great. That's something you campaigned on, and I have not seen that. I think that they're valid concerns, and my email was professional and courteous, and I think that the citizens have a right to be informed. Thank you.
(applause)
Mr. Kent Bryan?
Hi. I'm not much of a public speaker, but there I go. I'm here to talk about integrity and accountability. I served in the US military for 17 years, and in that job, I had to perform with complete clarity. If I didn't operate under a rule of integrity, somebody was going to die. The most important job that I've ever had in my entire life is that of being a dad. In that job, I used that same mentality. Integrity is paramount in all aspects of life. I tried to instill the importance of integrity into my boys, and as I put it to them, integrity is what you do when nobody's watching. You have to do the right thing, always, if you live with it. If you live without integrity, people will learn you can't be trusted, and you'll be held accountable for your actions. As you may know, it seems that I failed to instill that importance, the importance of living by that rule. My son failed to live by that rule and thought he'd be able to get away with it, just that one time, doing the wrong thing, and he paid the ultimate price for his lack of integrity. About three years ago, I ran for office to become a member of the school board, because I saw the administration was operating without integrity in many ways. I lost that bid. I pulled my boys from the Little Elm School District, even considered selling my house and leaving the town, and the status quo continued on. Some examples that I knew of at that time, the administration was quietly dismissing employees that might expose an inconvenient truth or try to identify and resolve problems. Students being caught in possession and/or dealing drugs, put into DAP, no criminal investigations. Parents told by senior administration, "I know what the law says, but that's not how we do it here in Little Elm." When these parents were requesting certain services required by state law. Parents being criminal press-mashed from campuses because they were unhappy with certain situations on campus and requesting an explanation or action from the administration. That was too inconvenient, they had to be banned. Some of these are personal experiences, others have been relayed to me by parents in the district. It was, yeah, so some of it's personal, some of it's people I know. Little Elm School District has some problems that need to be addressed. We need an administration that will operate with absolute complete integrity and actually care about the real results, not just how it looks on paper. The job of Little Elm School District is to teach our kids so that they might have a future. The first step of problem-solving is to identify that there is a problem. If the administration is not willing to admit problems exist because it might look bad, then nothing can ever be fixed. After talking with other parents in the district, it's apparent that there's a pretty serious drug issue in this town and in our schools. There was a visit by a drug dog two days before my son died. The official word we got was, "No problems, everything's good." I've heard otherwise from more than one person. When bad things are happening in our schools and parents have no idea, we now know somebody can die. If I had known how widespread drugs are in our middle school, I might have, might still have three sons instead of only two. After Elliot died, I was told that the administration at the school had been watching Root because they suspected a drug issue. They knew Elliot was friends with some of those suspected, but didn't share any information with anybody for privacy reasons. I was told, "There's never been drugs on our campus." A statement that I know for an absolute fact was a bald-faced lie. The kids at the school have the attitude, they can get away with it, because only thing that's going to happen to them is they get caught? DAP for 30 days, no big deal. Most parents would be happy just to have a kid sent to DAP and not have any criminal charges, so keep it quiet, it's pretty good for them. Keeping these issues hidden from members of the community may be good for certain people, but as you know, bad things can happen when the truth is hidden. Maybe nothing would be different, maybe he would have done it anyways, but I'll never know. I failed to teach them the importance of integrity. If I had known how widespread this issue is in Little Elm, maybe I could have made a difference, maybe I could have said something different that would have stopped them from being stupid. The Board can make a difference for our future. You must find people to replace the administration that will operate with absolute and total integrity. They have to do the right thing, even if it's difficult or inconvenient. We need integrity and accountability for the administration, the teachers, the students, because not holding people accountable for their actions will lead us all down a very dangerous path. Integrity, it's important. The future of our kids depend on it. The lives of our kids may very well depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. (applause) Mrs. Susan Roddick? Make sure, make sure. (inaudible) Pro Dr. Gessay, I apologize.
You're fine, you're fine. I have two kids in middle school this coming year, and what I'd like to address with the Board is the experience of the head principal that you will be replacing, Mr. [inaudible]. We had great experiences with Mr. Winkler, I just can't say enough great things about him, and it will be a great loss to the community and being alive. But as you're looking to replace him, you know, we have a lot going on at the middle school, so it would be good if we had somebody that had experience as the head principal. In a similarly situated situation as we had at the middle school, it's being renovated. This is the first year we're going to be doing academies, you know, so he's gone, he was implementing that. Discipline was really important, and we saw tremendous improvement in the middle school, and would like somebody with experience in keeping the programs that were implemented on track. You know, somebody that can point to their past successes in all of those critical areas that we have for our students. And then the other thing I'd like to address is the communication. You know, it would be great if the Board could present in writing what our strategy is, what your strategies and goals and objectives are, your one-year plan, your five-year plan, three-year plan, so that we know what you're doing and don't have a lot of questions. It seems like there's a tremendous amount of concern because there's a black hole, there's no information coming to the public, so if we could correct that, it would probably ease a tremendous amount of the concerns in the community. Thank you.
(applause)
I gave one, I gave my sheet to Lynda as well. Make sure it falls down somewhere.
And who would you be, sir?
Michael Lawson, I'm sorry. Michael Lawson.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lawson, I don't have, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't call you in. I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Ms. Lawson, please go first.
First of all, I just wanted, my name's Mike Lawson, I'm a junior daughter here at Little Elm, it's my youngest of three, my last and youngest of three, and I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you're doing for our school district. I realize it's been a lot of up and down. I've been here for four years, came out of Compel, and prior experience with the two older kids, and we had a big election, and I realize there were some changes, no doubt about it, but I need to be clear, from my opinion as a parent, I hope other parents here feel the same way, that the election wasn't an indictment, nor was it a mandate. It wasn't either one. There was some great work that was being done by many Board members before this election occurred, and hopefully those same Board members will continue to be a constructive part of what we're doing in this community, but there was also a need for change, otherwise there wouldn't have been that kind of an election or that kind of a margin. And so there was, we obviously have some concerns. That has been magnified over the past few weeks, needless to say, and so I won't try to repeat too much of what's already been said, but I have some big concerns as a parent. I'm on the PTA at the high school, I was on the site-based team with Mr. Winkler and Mr. Joseph, and Mr. Lester before that, working, I, you know, did a lot of things here in this community, at the school level, working with both of these principals and saw what they did. And so I understand some people moving off their greener pastures, but I also don't understand this level of change. It makes me, as a parent, very nervous, like many other parents probably here as well. I'd like to know what the plan is. I would also encourage, by saying it's not an indictment or a mandate in my opinion, that means really we're counting on you as Board members, the old, I'll call it that, and the new, to really pull together and say, okay, look, we had an election, some people that we were close to, maybe as old Board members are no longer here, we don't like that, or we disagree, or maybe you do agree, but either way, we need the new Board members and the old Board members to pull together and say, look, we had some really good stuff done, but we've got to make some changes. How can we make this happen as a group? I don't know, I'm not going to assume there's division, but I'm just saying if there is some level of division among you guys, I hope that you would lay that to bed quickly as possible. I also would like to ask if you're doing a liaison in any manner with the Board. I realize that, and I'm going to say this as a parent, very active parent over the last several years, it has been hard to get parents engaged with the school, at the campus level. Now, some of you guys in here may have been engaged, and you're saying, I don't, you're not talking about me, but I'm just telling you as a whole, I've struggled hard working with principals and APs and others to say, where's the parents, we're doing this, we're doing that, and nobody's around. Of course, now when you have this kind of shakeup, it gets more attention, which is great, nothing wrong with that attention. I just hope that it doesn't ebb and flow too far here. I hope the parents carry this forward and really jump in and help, and so I hope there's a liaison with the school board as we move forward to maybe help get some, maybe a finite set of parents, two or three that say, yes, I'll be a liaison to the Board, and I'll talk openly and represent the parents as a whole, so that, because it's, it's pretty ominous when you've got too many at once, what you've got. Anyway, I wonder if the pay level's competitive? If that's a question mark, it's not the only issue, but I'm just wondering, because it used to be. And so we got more competitive, we started getting some great people in here, and now all of a sudden we're having turnover again? I'm sure it's administrative changes, but I wonder if there's other issues there as well. Communication is a big issue, several pointed that out. We really need some, I don't care what vehicle you use, we just need more communication to us. The LEISD Connect from Julie is great, I just don't think it's really covering everything we need to have at this point. We don't have, as he said earlier, we only have 24, 25 workdays left, that's not much time. I know we have an interim, I think is Clint. I agree with Mr. Parker, I would love to see you guys consider him, I realize you're going to look at many apps maybe, but Mr. Miller I've worked with for many years now, and he's awesome, and he would be great. We need, we need also interim quick, we need interim help at the junior high for all the obvious reasons. Nobody said that today, and I'm not putting anybody else down, I just would like to say, I've worked with Trey Madder for a number of years now, and if you're looking for an interim person, that would be a great person to do. Last, but not least, you had an individual here that I worked with for many years as well, and his name was Robert Keener. Because it's pretty ominous when you've got too many at once, what you've got. Anyway, I wonder if the pay level's competitive? If that's a question mark, it's not the only issue, but I'm just wondering, because it used to be. And so we got more competitive, we started getting some great people in here, and now all of a sudden we're having a turnover again? I'm sure it's administrative changes, but I wonder if there's other issues there as well? Communication is a big issue, several pointed that out. We really need some, I don't care what vehicle you use, we just need more communication to us. The LEISD Connect from Julie is great. I just don't think it's really covering everything we need to have at this point. We don't have, as he said earlier, we only have twenty-four, four work, twenty-five workdays left. That's not much time. I know we have an interim, I think is Clint. I agree with Mr. Parker. I would love to see you guys consider him. I realize you're going to look at many apps maybe, but Mr. Miller I've worked with for many years now, and he's awesome, and he would be great. We need also interim quick, we need interim help at the junior high for all the obvious reasons. Nobody's said that today, and I'm not putting anybody else down. I just would like to say I've worked with Trey Matter for a number of years now, and if you're looking for an interim person, that would be a great person to do. Last but not least, you had an individual here that I worked with for many years as well, and his name was Robert Keener. I don't know what conditions he walked away from and had to resign, but if you're looking for an interim, somebody at the superintendent level, I'm not, again, I have no other names to put down to say, "Oh, don't, I'm just talking about Robert." And what he did, and what I see, the interactions I saw with the staff, and the interactions I saw with the community, and what inspiration he gave to students and the parents and the teachers as he worked with them and talked with them to get them to work together, to care about these kids, overlook obstacles, and do something positive. So even if it's on an interim basis, I don't know what his conditions of release were, maybe somebody worth considering. The PBL was a great point, I'll just throw that out at the end. It would work if there is equal accountability, and it just really wasn't happening. I don't think training was the whole issue. I think all the teachers needed to give equal accountability to each of the kids, because the kids aren't going to narc in each other, it's just not going to happen, folks. It happens better at the junior high level. As a licensed professional counselor, I can say that. So I hope you guys work together and the board pulls together. Thank you.
I would like to thank everyone for citizen input. I did let a few people run over. I felt it was really important to hear your comments, to the board, and hear some of the impacts that were happening in the community and the information that should come out. So I want to say thank you for everyone and thank you for your comments. Next portion, we'll go to, which may answer some of these questions here. Superintendent's report.
The board's report is going to come from the curriculum and instruction department, from our coordinator of science, Jason Bowman, who is going to give some background information on where the district is with the implementation of Forethought, which is a curriculum management system. He's going to give you all a brief little crash course on this awesome tool that is available at the fingertips of our teachers.
Is everyone can give me some front light here so the board comes out a little bit better? So that meaning can see? Or is it dark?
Yeah, that's about as good as it gets.
Okay, is everyone, can everyone see in the back there?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Hey, like Mr. Rittier said, Jason Bowman, the coordinator of science, just going to speak to some of the things that we've been working on over the last eight months. So the first part, hopefully, is pretty easy to see. It's just a timeline of what we've been doing and when we've been doing it, and what we expect for the future. And then I'll actually show you the system that we're going to be rolling out, that we've already pulled out to teachers to access the curriculum. So in December of 2013, the curriculum coordinators, along with Dr. Porter, got together and he began kind of defining the scope of what we needed to do to get the district curriculum in place. We determined the necessary pieces and structures that we would use moving forward so that that curriculum would be viable for our teachers and the students. In January of 2014, the coordinators began the process of creating those new documents based on the TEACs, our Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills. And we also sort of began researching a curriculum management system that we could use to deliver that. So in March of 2014, we finished bundling the units. So that's where we take the standards and we put them together in units that the teachers can teach to the students. And we did that at K-5 with the grade-level cadres. Those are our lead teachers at each campus. So it's a group of six teachers per grade level, per content area. So we had them all in the district, come together, and we met, and we bundled those together, and we got their input, and then we began working on the curriculum documents. You have some examples of what the curriculum documents look like in front of you. The ones that I provided are kindergarten science. There are three different documents. One is the course overview. That's the one that kind of looks like a four-column calendar. That has the units and the span of how long those units are, as well as the standards that go with them. You also have a year at a glance, which is a little more detailed. It still has the number of days for each unit, as well as the standard, but it gives more specificity to the teachers so they know what content is being covered at a glance. And then you also have a copy of the unit overview, which is a much more detailed look at the curriculum. You should have a copy of Algebra I and Kindergarten Science and that kind of stuff. So that has our bundled TEACs, it has the TEACs written out in the language from the state, as well as any process TEACs that we have, vocabulary, any resources that are aligned to that, to those standards. College and Career Readiness standards will be embedded in those for the appropriate grade levels. The ELPs, our English Language Proficiency Standards, are also identified in those as well as our Technology Application TEACs, which we can put in there. So in April of 2014, we took Forethought, which is the curriculum management system. Sorry, actually, in March, we took that and presented it to the cabinet. We got really good feedback on it. So then in April, that was taken in the Teacher Revival Council, where we also got really good feedback on it. So that kind of brings us to the summer. By the end of school, so June 1st, we had all of Units 1 ready for the teachers to look at in the system. So they were able to go into Forethought. I created a how-to video that showed them how to access Forethought through school objects, which is where we get all of our data from, and as well as our PDOTs and other things like that. So by the time teachers left school, they had access to the first unit for the next school year. Now, that was what we called the basic unit overview. It had the bundles and any other information that we could fit in there, but it wasn't complete at that time. So it didn't have vocabulary that was necessary, or the College and Career Readiness standards. So by August 1st, the first semester of curriculum will also be loaded in Forethought. So everything that teachers have to cover by December should be loaded by August 1st. Social studies and ELR, because our coordinator at the time was covering both of those subjects. Their timeline's a little different, but they are confident that they'll be able to have at least the first portions of their documents ready for teachers by August 1st. And then by August 31st, we'll have the resources, the College and Career Readiness standards, pre-AP extensions, and we'll start working on the second semester. So looking forward to October, we should have the second semester of the curriculum ready in Forethought. And then by December 19th, we'll be adding in all those extra bases to the curriculum. And then starting in 2015, we'll start working on the high school courses. So what we've done is we've done basically kindergarten through ninth grade for most courses. And so after we finish with that, we'll start bundling high school courses, chemistry, physics, and science, and geometry, algebra two, pre-algebra, math, and the other courses for ELA and social studies. So, June 2nd, Dr. Porter sent out the email. I've included a link to the video. If you'd like to take a look at it anytime, it's posted on YouTube. As of yesterday, we had sixty-four views, really happy about that. But hopefully we'll have more before the summer's over, because that really does go through everything teachers need in order to access the curriculum. If you pull that up, I'll show you what the management system looks like. So when teachers log into school objects, they have options to go into different parts of school objects, including workshop, Forethought, you know, professional development, PDOTs, and creative system. This is what it looks like when they log into Forethought. This is a teacher view. You can see that all of the bundles are listed there, Units 1 through however many we have. Usually there's around nine units per grade level. Gives the teachers extended time so that they can teach deeper in the content. And it also takes, gets back some time because they're not assessing the students as much for their some depth assessments. So you can see that we have basically Units 1 and 2 built. And again, by August 1st, we should have the rest of those units built so the teachers can access them. When they click on unit overviews, you see some links over on the side that links to a unit that you have in front of you so that the teachers can get a real in-depth look at what they need to be doing with students and what they're looking for.
Parents have access to a version of this, don't they?
Parents don't have access to school objects, as far as I know.
So they won't, this won't correlate with our online system, where it shows their grades and their assignments and things of that nature?
No, ma'am, no. However, anytime a parent would like to view the curriculum, they're more than welcome to talk with the teacher, or, you know, if they want to make an appointment with me or any other content coordinators, we'd love to take you through the curriculum and show you, explain the different pieces of it, how it's a piece of stuff.
I thought we did have online information about all the courses that are currently available.
We do have information about the courses that are available, but not to this detailed level, where they actually have access to the pieces of the curriculum.
And is it something that, or the pieces of curriculum that are currently out there, the person that we have online, it's on a detailed level? Are you guys thinking about producing that detailed level information? Or is it just, has the opportunity for the parent to speak to the teacher?
Yeah, mostly that's an opportunity for the parents to talk with teachers so they can get a better understanding of what we're going to start. You will see syllabus or, you know, year at a glance, something like that, easy to get access to.
So is this, I guess, okay, I'll just ask to have you answered. What's the biggest benefit to this? I can see a few things myself, but I don't want to.
I think the biggest benefit of the system is that, first of all, it's created by our teachers for our students. We've added some pieces in that they've never had before, like the course overview, which allows them to see a ninety-thousand-foot view, or maybe it's fifty-thousand-foot view, of what they're going to be doing and when they're going to be doing it. The detail and specificity that they get from the unit overview is more detailed and an easier, more approachable way to view the content. So what we have been using was the instructional focus document. We took kind of the best pieces of that and the things that we know about, and we put them together into the unit overview for the teachers.
So all, for example, all fifth-grade teachers should be in the same unit, around the same time period, correct?
Yes, they should.
And, I don't know, for me as a parent, I always like to know what my child is supposed to learn through the semester, things like that. So they can get stuff like this from the teacher now? They have this, that by the end of the first six weeks, they're going to know this criteria? Like kindergarten, they're going to know how to say, spell their name?
Yes, we've had a year at a glance for a while, which did kind of the same thing. We're just providing more tools for the teachers to use.
And the goal is consistency, historic horizontally across programs.
Yes. The content coordinators work very closely together. It's almost unreal, I've never worked with a team like this before. So, you know, we planned everything together. Our documents all look the same, they're consistent, from math to science to ELA to social studies. They all have the same pieces of information. And, you know, we tried really hard to make sure things are consistent from horizontally as well as vertically, helping out. But so far as to make sure that the unit naming was even consistent from one grade level to the next.
And so that really is looking forward to helping deliver coursework that's going to help students keep it horizontally across each one of the coursework's that are out there, as well as vertically, seeing what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Does this also include, like, the dual court, the high, you said it doesn't include high school yet, right?
Right now, we only have a few high school courses that have the rebundled curriculum, Algebra I, Biology are the ones I know of.
U.S. History, World History.
U.S. History, World History. And we'll be working on the rest of the high school courses by 2015.
So the high schools currently just using what they were using before?
They're using the existing instructional focus document and the existing app, yes.
And what about your dual language? Like the lady mentioned earlier, her trials in the English-Spanish program, does it include that as well?
It does have Spanish correlations. They're still covering the same standards, whether they're taking an English course or a dual-language course. We do provide the tests in Spanish for dual-language courses from our department. And I know with the textbook adoption, it also has the Spanish, and has our textbook in Spanish as well. And the existing product that we use, stethoscopes, also has a Spanish component to it for those dual languages.
Thank you.
Our next update is from our coordinator of College and Career Readiness, Tasha Sheehan. She's going to provide a follow-up, Abbott, and update.
Okay, I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about Abbott. I don't know how much you know about Abbott. So I wanted to start by showing you just a very, very brief video that kind of speaks to the Abbott students, since that's what we're going to be talking about.
People like me, people like me.
People like me.
People like me don't go to college.
Nobody's ever going to convince me that I'm going to be somebody someday.
Street cred, it's more valuable than my education. My life will be defined by those who doubt me.
I know there are some out there looking up to me. I'll let those AP and honor student be future leaders and policymakers.
Because me, I'm just one out of a long line of statistics.
Who knows, maybe I'll even study.
But it won't affect how my life is going to turn out.
People tell me I can't succeed because they can't see past my skin color or how I talk. They say I'm carrying out to be a first-generation college student.
I am the last person in my family that's going to be successful. I'm aware of the skills and talents I possess.
This is my destiny.
That was me, before Abbott helped me see my potential, believe in myself, and turn all that around. And now?
This is my destiny. I am aware of the skills and talents I possess to be successful. I am the last person in my family that's ever going to be a first-generation college student.
I don't care enough, they say, because they can't see past my skin color or how I talk.
People tell me I can't succeed, but it won't affect how my life is going to turn out. Who knows, maybe I'll even study statistics.
Because me, I'm just one out of a long line of future leaders and policymakers.
I want those AP and honor students to be looking up to me. I know there are some out there, those who doubt me. My life will be defined by my education.
It's more valuable to me than street cred. I'm going to be somebody someday.
Nobody's ever going to convince me that people like me don't go to college.
So, all right, so just to give you a little overview, the Abbott mission is closing the achievement gap and preparing students for success. In global society, we are significantly, have significant educational reform challenges, a lot of which we've talked about. But we must meet that need now, and we must help those students, particularly low-income and minority students. Improving students' critical thinking, reading, and their writing abilities allows them to participate in succeeding courses of high rigor and better prepares them for post-secondary access and success. Building cultures of college and career readiness and confidence in the ability of all students to achieve their dreams creates a momentum to transform schools and school districts. And that exponentially powerful and positive goes on and on. Abbott closes the expectation and opportunity gaps that students face, and in doing so, transforms lives, transforms campuses, and transforms communities. There are eleven essentials that have to do with Abbott. I'm not going to read them all, so you have provided them for you in the PowerPoint. But I just want you to know that Abbott is an instructional system that is set in place. It goes all the way from the elementary to the higher education. We currently utilize it in our district of our secondary campuses for sixth through twelve-grade students. And the things, it's kind of built on the philosophy of helping students to become prepared in the five different areas through best practices in teaching. And so a good illustration is WICER, that's the, we're going to spell out here in a second, is kind of the vehicle or the plate in which you're giving these kids this information. So writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And those are all areas that students have to have fundamental foundational ability in if they're going to be successful at the post-secondary level, whether that be junior college, or four-year university, or at whatever level. So always, we can kind of talk about it as, "For whatever comes next for them." And so meeting that challenge, we're trying to develop students as readers and writers, develop content and knowledge, and help students in those areas so that they can communicate, have good habits and skills and behaviors that will help them as they get ready to move forward. Some demographics from Texas as it relates to Abbott students. I kind of, I always say Abbott is not a different way of spelling GT. It's not just for the kids that are going to make it no matter what. It's for those middle kids that need that little extra help. And they need that person in their life, that person to help them, that mentor, that's somebody who's going to care and really help them to hone their skills and really see that diamond in the rough in them. So it is kind of that, it's for that middle group of kids. And typically, those that would be first-generation college students. Other students can participate, but it targets those kids in helping them to know that they can. Go ahead. This is actually the student profile for an average Abbott student. As you can see, has potential, would typically be the first to attend. None of these are die-hard, have-tos, but that's kind of what an average student would look like. As you can see, students that are involved in Abbott, in Texas... As you can see, students that are involved in Abbott, in Texas, which is the second bar in Texas, students are 92, about 92% of students are completing college entrance requirements, and nationally, that averages 36%. So that's a huge difference. It also helps to close the achievement gap with our minority students as well. You can also see here, the students, the Abbott students are in the dark, the national average is the yellow. So you can see across the board in all minority subgroups, Abbott does help them, it helps to give them that extra bit of support that they need to move forward and qualify for post-secondary education. Just a little more statistics about Abbott and some of the things. Abbott is a college and career readiness system that has been around for about 30 years and has been very successful in helping numerous students identify and go to college. Why does it work? Because it provides students the opportunity to stretch themselves and to do maybe something they wouldn't normally do. And it challenges them and then provides them support and helps them hopefully to move forward in that way. So here are some statistics from our campuses. We have two new site coordinators for this coming year. We're very excited. Mr. Gene Thompson is right here, he's with us today. He's going to be at the high school. He's been on the Abbott site team, a very active member of the Abbott team on the high school campus for numerous years. Four? Three, okay. Next year before. So, and we're really excited to have him lead that effort. He's been working really hard, starting last spring, working, meeting with every individual student and trying to find out what Abbott needs to do for them. And so here's some of our enrollments. We have gone through kind of a little bit of some challenges, but we're coming back strong. Lakeside Middle Schools, you can see Gina McAdams, she was here earlier, she had a little person cross, this is she had the week. She's going to be our site coordinator at the middle school. The middle school has kind of taken a little bit different approach. They have multiple Abbott teachers for different classes so that one person can focus on each grade level. And that's seeming to be a good model. And as you can see, those numbers are significantly higher for this coming year on pre-enrollment at 120. So we're roughly serving about 175, 85 students currently pre-enrolled for that. Both the high school and the middle school have gone through the recertification process, being on process this spring, and we're certified for Abbott sites for next year. I also included some other stuff that I'm going to read to you, just some other update information. Any questions?
Couple of questions. You talked about some challenges, so can you help me understand the 82 to 62, why the drop-off?
I really think that the major problem that we had is our site team at the high school was not functioning very well. We had a new site coordinator that had never been Abbott trained and wasn't trained until later in the year. She had some medical issues over the summer, and so I think it was kind of hard. We didn't have a full site team going to summer institute last year. And so we just really struggled, I think, with that. And so, you know, we have Gene that has been wanting to really take a lead on that for quite some time, and so, you know, he had stepped up as well, had some other site team members, and really, just really wanting to move forward.
Second question, 82, is that everybody that has applied or what's the acceptance rate? I mean, I understand some of the criteria, the criteria is soft, some combinations of things. How many, help me understand the application and how many people enroll? Do you need more assistance if we got, if we, can we get more kids in that fit the criteria?
Right.
If you had more assistance, more help?
I think that we, I think the biggest problem at the high school level is with, you know, there's so many things that kids have to take.
And let me ask them, it goes for both?
Okay.
So, so application and acceptance in both.
Right. That was a challenge at the middle school, we did have to take, pull some people in and do some, where we just actually screened all day for two days and screened applications. And we did get that number up a lot because we did, Mr. Winkler paid for substitutes and brought the site team in so that they could go through those applications and interview all those students one-on-one, and so that number did go up significantly for them. I think at the high school level, it's been a little more challenging because they have so many other classes they have to take, and so a lot of times, we just kind of experience the final effect, and it just, it gets smaller and smaller. And so I think that-
I think I did a poor job in asking my question. Were students turned away that met the qualifications because we didn't have enough resources to support them?
Not to my knowledge, but, you know, I've only been to Abbott district under for a year, so this is my first complete year to intern at Abbott.
It'd be interesting to know if we're turning away qualified students because we don't have the resources and the support to make the program as efficient.
I think that that maybe has, that the support issue maybe has been a problem in the past, but, you know, I think right now, we're on a good page for that to happen and to get better.
Okay. If you need more resources, I think this is definitely a worthwhile, successful project, and I guess, you know, from my perspective, if you need more resources, you need more help, please come back, let the management, the administration know, have them come to us.
I'd like to add quickly, because I think this is essential work law. Personally, I'll be the first generation college ready as well as college completion. I think it's a hugely important part of what we are, and as for our community of kids who decide they want to go to college, as well as kids who decide, you know, hey, they may want to choose another career, so this needs to have a really great point.
I'm sorry, we can't get you back here. Can you speak up a little bit? Thank you.
Will the Abbott program be available at the STEM Academy for the seventh and eighth grade reserves?
It was decided that we were not going to offer it at the STEM Academy. I suggested that we might pilot it at the STEM Academy and use the elementary model and go K eight with it because Abbott does have an elementary model. We currently are not taking advantage of that, that is pretty new, but I've done a lot of research into that, and the K eight academy would be an excellent place if we wanted to consider doing elementary, to pilot that because we could go K eight with it. So that is an option that would, I think would benefit our students, particularly those who have students without.
Your two is a lot, your one?
Yes.
Okay. You're over college career readiness, not just Abbott, right?
Correct.
If there's no other questions about Abbott, can I ask you a question about college career readiness?
Yeah.
While I have you here.
No, no problem. If I don't have the answer, I'll find you.
And that's fine. Can you kind of give me an update or give the board an update about the CTE credits at the junior high? I know there was a problem getting those, there was an issue that with half-credit, a whole-credit, getting those, you know, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, yes.
Can you give me an update?
We had some problems. I think there was a clerical error in the catalog from last year that identified the eighth grade Lego Robotics class as being a half-credit, high school credit, and the seventh grade was correct in the course guide where it just said it was an elective. We do, and so that was the question. We do offer high school credits in engineering through our Gateway to Technology program, and students can take those engineering classes and then move forward with high school credit on those. I think that the, in addition to the typographical error, I think there's some similar content and they're taught by the same teacher, and so I think there was some confusion there as to whether it was the GTT versus the Lego Robotics. But the primary problem was, I think, would be the typographical error in the catalog.
So can we make sure that this year, whenever they're registering, that it's very clear, maybe full print, talk to the parents individually, the students, that they understand specifically, whether it's a high school credit, a half-credit, or it's a middle school credit?
Right, and I agree with that, and one of the things in talking with some of the parents that had some concern, I even said, you know, perhaps that chart your course when we have that opportunity for parents to come and talk. We could, we've had them together, because they're taught by the same teacher, but have separate places so that there isn't that distinction between the pre-engineering classes, which are high school credit, and the Lego Robotics.
And also the communication. What I got from the same question was that it wasn't communicated until way into the year.
I think it was week nine.
And so, if we ever, I don't know, if we ever run into that kind of situation where we find that there's an error, I would really like to know if we get some type of communication out there as soon as possible. This is, I mean, this wasn't the first time by any means that communication was delayed, I'm not, I just, I, you know, mistakes happen, but we've got to communicate when they're found.
And I do think that, you know, it was, once it was brought forward to us, you know, we as a curriculum instruction department investigated as best we could, met with all the parents, or spoke with all the parents, and, you know, just trying to make sure that we had explained the situation, apologized for the clerical error.
Thank you.
Next update is from our Director of Accountability and Student Support. She is going to provide an update on school choice procedures. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to, she's going to start with the policy update, then go into school choice procedures.
All right, so you had asked for a policy update at the last board meeting, and in February, Ashle Glover and I had done an audit of all of our board policies, and we made note of any of those board policies that were five years or more out of date or that had a discrepancy with anything that we knew was coming up with the current, with the change in the legislation. Many of those were corrected in the updates that you adopted in 98 and 99, and we are still waiting on update 100, which hasn't come from TASB yet. But there are still a few that we had found in our audit that are five or more years since we last adopted them, and we don't know if they were looked over or if that's really the last time that they were addressed by the legislation. So in the fall, this will year, we will be working with TASB to do an audit of those policies that we found discrepancies with. And so once that's completed, then I'll have another update for you.
Is that, TASB, is that with Mr. Williams?
Well, he's one of them, I think he's-
One of them.
Yeah, I think he also does policy updates for the board.
Yes, so we are expecting update 100, which should clean up some of the remaining discrepancies with some of the laws that have been recently passed, okay? They just hadn't come in yet. Okay, the next item that I'll be doing is school choice procedures. And when we began-
I'd like to pause right there, that's an action item on the agenda, is this the appropriate time to be discussing?
We would have that late, and that was action discussion, discussion of school choice procedures. There was Dr. Obama speaking. This is school choice procedures.
It is, I think they're-
It is an action item, yes.
This is going to be a work presentation.
So in the fall, we had the committee that met, that was when we first came, adopted the school choice procedures specifically for both dual language and Preswood STEM Academy, and then-
Just a little louder, I'm sorry. We can't hardly hear you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, so we, in the fall, we had adopted the procedures for how we were going to do enrollment for dual language programs and also for the STEM Academy. And at that time, we had decided that enrollment in Preswood STEM Academy would be granted for any student living within the HOA as part of the contract with the HOA, meaning the Tribute HOA. Then we also had the school zone, so any student residing within the Preswood School Zone would be granted enrollment. Then we also said that the remaining seats would be students randomly drawn based on any enrollment expectations that we had for that campus at those grade levels. So we have the Preswood STEM Academy, and enrollment is capped for 66 students in grades K through five at each of those grade levels, and 144 students in grade six, seven, and eight at each of those grade levels. We have an issue that we are currently going to be facing is we have enrollment nearing capacity at some of the grades, and this is due in large to the huge interest in the STEM Academy. Our department daily is taking calls, we took a call today, someone wanting to know what streets were zoned for STEM because they wanted to specifically buy a house that was in that zone. And then also, within the STEM zone that we created last year, up here in this quadrant here, where you see no streets at all, there are now streets there with names and actual houses and people living in them. And so there's been a huge growth of housing in that area. And so this has attributed to us reaching capacity at several of those grades nearing. We won't know for sure until after registration that everyone that we expect to come is really coming. So what has happened is with the Tribute HOA students, the parents have signed a letter that says, yes, they are coming. And then anytime that we know someone that has moved into the STEM zone, we have also sent them a letter to say, are you going to be accepting the seat or going to private school, homeschool, you know, what are you doing? Are you doing dual language? And so based on our projections for demographics, with demographics, that's how we decided how many seats to put into the random draw. So now we ask you to make a decision on a revision to the school board procedures, and this is in your board book, but we have to know how, if we reach capacity and a student moves into the HOA Tribute at that same grade level, how we will give that seat to the student from the HOA and unenroll a student who previously has had that.
You can't do that.
The plan is three years ago.
So what we have here is, you're going to have three choices, and all three choices-
Mike's working, he's got it. I'd like to please keep the comments down so that everyone can be getting here.
So you will have three choices, and each of the three choices will start the same, with the same first three criteria. The first one is if a student is attending the school choice program with a verified contract for a home being built within the HOA Tribute boundaries, the student may remain enrolled in the school choice program. If a student is attending the school choice program on a host residency application, the host residency will be verified by an administrator or designee. If the host residency application is found to have been falsely filed, the student will lose their enrollment for the school choice program. And if a student is attending the school choice program with a verified contract for a home being built within the school choice program zone, that's that zone outside of the HOA Tribute. And that house is not currently being occupied yet because it's not completed, then that student will lose their seat and transferred to a school geographically closest that is not at capacity. And then the choices begin with choice one. Choice one, where we will look only at the students that entered enrollment through the random draw. So if, for example, we have second grade at capacity and an HOA Tribute student moves in, then we will look at all the students in second grade that were granted enrollment via random draw, and the first thing we'll look at is, are any of them have an issue of truancy based on the truant laws? If they do, then that would be the student that would lose their enrollment. The second issue that we would look at would be discipline. So is anyone that came in to the STEM through random draw have a discipline issue? And we laid it out with, have they been to DAP one or more times? Or have they had ISS or OSS as a discipline three times or more? And if neither of those two have a student, then we would place all of the students in that grade level, the example I'm using is second grade, that were randomly drawn from across the six schools in the district. We would randomly draw that student's name, and then that student would be sent back to their home campus.
We would randomly draw that student's name, and then that student would be, uh, sent back to their home campus. Uh, and then siblings that came in with that student, they may remain at the STEM as long as that grade level was not affected. So your second choice would look at, not the random draw students, but then you would look at the students that are in that Preswood zone that are not in the HOA Tribute. And it would look at the same criteria. So first, we would look at truancy, then we would look at discipline, and then we would place all of the students that were in that grade level. So any second grader that was in the zone that was not in the HOA Tribute would be drawn out. And then those students would move to the geographically closest school that was not at capacity at that grade level. And then the third choice is the same situation. This time, you would place any student that was not in the HOA zone. So you would place all randomly drawn students and all students outside of the HOA Tribute, but still within the Preswood zone. And the first thing you would look at for that grade level, are any students facing truancy? Do any students have a discipline issue? And if neither of those criteria can be met, then we would place every student that was not in the HOA Tribute for a random draw. The students that were drawn out, if they were drawn out for a random drawn student, they would be returned to their home campus. And then if it was a zone student, they would be, uh, sent to the nearest geographical school which was not at capacity at that grade level. And there are pros and cons to each of these, um, issues. One of the, um, one of the things that we talked about earlier is the transportation issue. And so, you're going to be faced with a transportation issue with the, uh, if we're moving, busing students out from the zone to other campuses that are geographically close. Any questions?
Do we have numbers today? I know that they're not final, where do we sit today?
Based on, um, based on phone calls and letters. So every time anyone called our office, we wrote down their name, wrote down their address, wrote down the grade level. And then we have all of the letters that we had sent out and that got returned back to us from the Tribute members and also from the Zone members. Um, and so, at two of our grade levels, one is, um, based on those numbers, and this is without looking at proof of residency verification and them actually showing up on registration date. One of our grade levels at the elementary level is at sixty-five, and the other one is at sixty-three. The other, uh, three, four grade levels are in the fifties.
What's the, you say sixty-five and sixty-three are at capacity?
Sixty-six. So we're one away at one grade level if everyone shows up, and we are three away at another grade level if everyone shows up.
So in total, where are we at? What is the capacity at that total? I mean, what is the total capacity and where are we at now?
I'd put it at about, well.
For K through five.
K through five, because, uh, six, seventh, and eighth is different. I would say at K through five, we're probably close to, brand new, close to about ninety percent, correct? Yes. Yes.
So, that is just for this year, what are we looking at next year? I mean, are, are we gonna even have room next year?
And let me say that when we, when we pulled the stu, when we started doing this, and we started deciding how many seats we were gonna give away, uh, for the random draw, we left fifteen seats open per grade level. So, the, the boom that we've had in the housing development far exceeded anything that we were prepared for, or that we had been, um, led with the demographics. And so, the, a lot of it, we believe, is attributed to the promotion of the STEM Academy and people calling and wanting to know. We would have, you know, family member after family member would call and say, is this house in the zone? Is this house in the zone? We'd be constantly looking at addresses, and then they would pick a house that was in that zone.
Are there any concerns about being at capacity at their home school and then having to be shipped to a different school?
We do have some concerns about that. Because we have, um, we've allocated staff based on the numbers that we have given to you, based on who we knew when we took out the STEM students. For example, if we randomly drew, you know, ten kids or fifteen kids across the district from the different campuses, if we drew three students here and three students there, then we'd reduce those numbers, and then we stopped based on those allocations.
Just take a quick step back, because, um, I think, it's getting a little confusing with the numbers. We had sixty-six seats for kindergarten, we allocated how many for, for zone students?
Um, it was, it, I don't have those numbers on me, I can get them to you specifically.
Can you do, can you do give examples so they understand that we had zone students, random drawing, and then we had a cushion?
Correct, and it was very different for each grade level, okay? So, um, and these by no means are correct numbers, okay, at all, so don't quote me on these numbers.
Right.
But if you want an example of how the process went, so let's say that, um, in the HOA Tribute roles that we were provided, we said that we had ten kindergarten students, or ten students that were going to be five September one, okay? So, then that meant that we had fifty-six seats to give away, okay? And then, when we looked at, okay, so we have those, then looking at the demographics for the rest of the STEM zone, if we had another twenty kids, then that was thirty seats, and then we had thirty-six seats left. But if we wanted to change, save out the fifteen, then we only had eleven.
Y'all doing my math for me?
Okay, okay, so, um, then we separated those, and then remember, we gave extra seats to Zellers. And so, we looked at how many seats we were going to be able to give away, and then we calculated it, how many per grade level, giving the extra seats to Zellers. And then, after anywhere, anywhere left over per campus, so at that point, it was two per campus, and then, you know, four for Zellers. So, that's a rough idea of how this happened.
But the fifteen you were talking about was in addition to.
The fifteen, we didn't even touch that fifteen. We took those off the top because we wanted to be able to have enough seats for any students moving into the area. So, I was, this was completely unexpected when we started getting the boom in growth.
For me, I need to see the numbers for every grade. Who is in the HOA, just who is in the HOA, who is in the attended zone, and who was random? My personal perspective is, we cannot start kids in that school day one and pull them out. It's not gonna be a decision, it's not gonna be something fun to do, but we're gonna, you know, my perspective, and I don't think people will vote on this, they, you know, I don't, I know I won't own the information.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a kick in the gut for some kids who thought that they were gonna get in there, but we need to, we need to start those kids at their home campus where they're gonna spend the entire year. And we need to say, you know, day one, we've got fifteen seats available, and be ready for continued growth over the next, the next school year.
Well, the idea, like you're saying, is, is increase capacity, uh, in one regard. What I do is try to look at how to pass it increase, because the demographics apparently are showing something different than what was originally planned for, if, if I'm not reading you right.
It's not, it's not increasing capacity, because we're bringing these children in that don't, that aren't in the HOA, that aren't in that zone district. So we don't need, we don't need to create capacity at the school, it'd be great to do that, but unfortunately, we've gotta take some of those kids and send them home.
Yeah, but at some point, if, if the demographics are showing that you wanna have more people move to Tribute, either one of your options, that's one of your options. I'm just saying, this is an option that you have, is increase capacity for the option. Another option, like you say, is continue, another model.
Can I, can I have you repeat what you said is I hope we should do, and we don't wanna do on day one, but what?
I didn't hear you, because I'm not having knowledge of you. But let me restate what I said. I thought I was gonna, yeah. My perspective to the board, not the audience, um, is that we do not start kids in that school day one, knowing that we're gonna have to pull them out at some time this school year.
My fault, my fault. The idea there is supposed to roll in.
We need to ship kids home now, sorry. Not fun to do, not what we wanna do.
So, let's take that off-line.
Why don't we take that off-line? This is a board discussion.
So, I was just saying, did you wanna discuss that? I'm no problem with that.
It's, it's on the agenda, we're here, let's hear what we have to say, I'm not sure.
I, I agree, we don't, I don't think you started, it's not fair to the children, it's not fair to the family. You don't start them in one school, knowing that within a month, you may have to pull them. I mean, these are our kids, these are our family, these are our lives, you don't do that. There's even the potential. Fortunate, and we, we knew this a couple of months ago, we had this discussion at the meeting. We were hoping that's why we buffered for the extra fifteen, thinking that maybe that, hopefully that would be enough. Um, we had this discussion with Dr. Porter, we thought it would be enough, and just the growth, it, it just boomed, and it, it just wasn't, or it appears that it's not. Um, I would like to direct Mr. Gutierrez, if you can come back with some numbers. I, I would still like to see that report. Um, I know focus isn't running, but if we can get some, you know, some, some numbers, that would, that would still be good. But I agree with Mr. Viegas that you don't, you don't, you don't do that to the family, you don't do that to the kids.
Well, the other part I wanna add, just kinda even on that, is not just in the year, but we're gonna have kids that are starting first grade, kindergarten, at the STEM, and next year, they're gonna potentially go back to their home campus, and these kids are thinking that they're not gonna get to go to their same elementary school.
That's been, that's been known since day one.
But we were, my understanding is that they were supposed to go for, they were gonna be going for years. And, I mean, this is happening, I mean, we can't, there's nothing we can do about it, but it's still an issue that bothers me, that if my child was going to kindergarten at one school because he got picked to go there, but next year, he's either gonna have to go through another drawing, or he's gonna have to go back to his home school, because we're at capacity. You know, how many, how many seats are gonna be reduced next year to even allow other kids to go? And, I don't know, kids start from kindergarten through fifth grade in their elementary school.
Listen, I mean, if, if the idea is, this is an academy.
Well, not either one, it's an academy.
It's sixty-six, seven, eight. K five, and all of them, two of them, so.
Isn't this, are we doing STEM programs down from the beginning, not just six, seven, eight? Isn't there a STEM, isn't there a STEM focus for the younger grades as well?
Yes, it's, like, there's a science, it, it's covered through the regular TEES in science, yes. TEES, the science and math TEES. But at the STEM, we were going to integrate the science and the math through also the reading of the social studies, et cetera. So it would be at those lower levels, correct?
So the statement that STEM is only six, seven, eight.
No, the academies.
The academies.
Academies, academies were six, seven, eight.
But STEM and acad, I guess for me, STEM and academy are one of the same.
Well, it's a STEM teaching principal, and then the academies were all, yeah, it's, sorry. But no, I just, if you're, if you're starting your kid at STEM kindergarten to have these STEM principals, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to finish it.
Students in K five, we receive an additional engineering curriculum in addition to their science and math, so yes, that is, if it gets in kindergarten, it filters all the way up. At the middle school level, they'll take electives that will focus on that, that K through five students will receive all the core subjects in addition to forty-five minutes' walk of engineering course.
If I just engineering, besides your normal course work.
I, I wanted just to go back to Peter's point, too. I think, from a standpoint of everybody knew they weren't gonna be in that, at some point down the road, two, three years down the road, I don't think that was well communicated. I sat in many of those committees throughout last summer and through the fall, and it was, once you're in, you held your place. Now, that's not the case. Many of the parents that I'm talking to are, they felt they got into first grade, they're going through eighth grade, then they're going on to high school. So that, that really concerns me a lot, that that's not the case, that's not what's, what's gonna happen. That is truly a tribute, tribute school for Tribute residents.
They helped pay for it, yes.
I, I understand that.
I think the disconnect was the idea that kids home, little home would be able to, to have a position and spot there. And really, I guess, in the end of the day, they're not gonna have a position and spot available to them.
Well, we, we still don't know that. I mean, we, without looking at the numbers. It's looking like it's, it's gonna be potentially harder, is what we're hearing, particularly in probably the younger grades, but we don't know that for sure. I think we're putting the cart before the horse, the horse before the cart, and I think that's probably the right term. I'm sorry. A long day. But I, I think, I think it's important that we look at the numbers, yes.
Well, we do look at the numbers, but someone in kindergarten runs a risk for the next seven years.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you're right. I think, I think the likelihood that somebody coming in kindergarten first, second, probably even third, and going the whole course is, is unlikely.
Well, and I, are we able to determine, how, I mean, I understand some of the points you made, but the mother first report was a three to five-year plan, if I remember correctly. I mean, we're looking at not even getting to start.
At this area, this particular area is showing more growth than we expected. And when I've talked to people in our district at the support center, and we are attributing that to the STEM school. I mean, we have a double-edged sword here, we're building a school that kids wanna come to. We have people that are calling from out of state, asking us about this program, and are particularly looking for houses in that area.
And I, and I hope that we're, when we're answering them, that we're saying, if you, and guarantee's a tough word, if you move into the Tribute HOA, you're guaranteed a spot at the school.
Correct, that is what we're saying.
If you buy a home that's currently zoned in that district, you may get in today.
Correct.
But tomorrow, just like any school in any other district in the fast-growing community, you may get zoned out. So while you move into that street today, you may not be there tomorrow. And that's just normal course of business and normal course of school, of what we do in the school.
Correct, and we have one person answering all of those phone calls, so the same message is being delivered by the same person. And that is the message that we are giving, that we are only guaranteeing a seat if you live within the HOA Tribute and are paying dues. If you currently live, as of this year, in the zone, we cannot guarantee you a seat in future years.
And so, so the comment about, and I understand the concern about communication, and if it was, if it was not communicated well, I apologize for that. But as I think about this, the same thing goes. So you're into the random drawing today, and you get into first grade, and you may get withdrawn because of certain circumstances. You may live on a street and think you're good because you live on that street that you're gonna be able to continue through the STEM Academy. We may see growth wherever we see it and need to rezone, and during that rezoning, you're gonna get moved out of STEM Academy. Because at that point, it's really just about what your home school is. Regardless, I don't think we're, I don't think we're ready, but thank you for the update. This is not to last in this discussion, I don't think people voted for tonight.
I wanna, I wanna give you just a little bit of information, since I talked about.
Please, please skip down a while, we have a speaker.
I was specifically talking about K five and the numbers there. I also wanna point out that at grade six, our capacity is at one forty-four, and we're at one fifty-seven, but we are lower in seventh and eighth grade. And so, we're able to hold that capacity, but it's going to affect our electives. And so, um, that's a, that is a decision that needs, that I think will be, is being brought, is for the electors. So that's another piece that you need to know as well, is the numbers in sixth grade. Our seventh and eighth grade numbers are low enough that we can hold that capacity and keep one, but it affects scheduling, okay?
Bring it all.
Yeah, yeah, let's go through, go through the process, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Miller, interim associate principal at the high school is going to provide a transcript update.
Good evening, uh, much of the information I'm gonna share with you, I shared with you through writing already, so I'm going to keep it brief. On June twenty-fourth, I was called to a meeting in Ms. Lightheart's office. Uh, she named me the interim associate principal, and immediately, the discussion turned to transcripts. And the first question she asked me was, where are we on transcripts? And I said, Ms. Lightheart? And I said, Ms. Lightheart, I haven't had nothing to do with transcripts. It's not an area of responsibility that belongs to me, or that I fall under, I'm not sure. And she said, well, we need to get moving on it. And so, the first thing I asked her was, has there ever been a time where everyone involved in transcripts has come together, sit down around the same table, discussed the issues, and then made a plan to get them right? And she said, not to my knowledge. And so, the first thing I did was, had that meeting. And immediately, it turned negative. Focus was brought up quite frequently, programming issues. And we were nearing July 1st, which is a very important time for our graduating seniors, because if we don't have transcripts out, they're about to start losing scholarship money, start being denied admittance into college that they had been accepted to. And so, we basically made a plan, and we sat down together after lunch on Wednesday, and began working on transcripts. We started with the highest-ranking student, the valedictorian, went through, got that student's transcript corrected, verified it, signed it, stamped it, and we continued on through every student that graduated. And by lunchtime Monday, we did have a clean transcript for every student that did graduate this past school year. And students were notified, they were able to start coming in and picking them up, and we, I have not heard any issues since. After that, I had to turn my attention to other areas, master schedule being the main one. And tomorrow, all of our other administrators and counselors come back on contract. We have some immediate priorities that we have to look at. Completing the schedule, number one, organizing registration, and laptop deployment, and freshman orientation, and several other items. But what I think needs to happen from here is, shortly after school begins and things run smoothly, we need to get all those same people sitting around the same table again. Because one common problem that I've seen with transcripts in the short time I've been associated with, working with them, is there's way too much email communication going back and forth, and not enough face-to-face interaction. And there's still some problems that exist. We were able to also go through, identify the errors on the underclassing transcripts. And we need everybody who's involved in this process, including Brandon, our computer programmer, to sit down and get them right. There are one or two programming errors that I'm continuing to see, and there are some things that were errors on our side. We have to go back, and we have to re-enter some classes in the course catalog. Because we have a couple of recovery courses from the 2012 school year that aren't pulling over on the students' transcripts because they were entered incorrectly. And so, that's where we currently are with our transcripts.
So, are you seeing underlying data issues? Who the programmer was assisting you making those corrections, or?
Yes, there's been, there's been a lot of communication back and forth. I believe that all of the programming errors have been fixed. The only one that I'm not certain of is there was, in the code section, there was one common problem that we were experiencing where students were being coded with classes that was giving them possible college credit that they should not have been. And so, I know that every programming issue had been fixed besides that. I have not gone back and checked since then to see, because I've been very occupied with other things.
So, our programming issues are fixed, and our core data issues are also fixed, is that correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Great, so, some of the things that I think we were looking at at one time was electronic distribution of transcripts to colleges and things of that sort. Is that still part of the focus process, or?
Do you want to speak to that? Brandon is our coordinator of student data.
I'm like Mr. Gutierrez, I'm a brand ambassador of the data processing information systems coordinator, hired on at the end of April, and I have been working with Mr. Miller and various high school staff over the past few months to resolve a lot of these issues, and also with the course catalog, the rezoning, things of that nature. Focus, to my knowledge, does not have an electronic distribution of transcripts method built into it. I know that there are other approved systems that are in place. And that is certainly things on that are high priority. I don't want to list, because we do want to make sure that those transcripts are transmitted as effectively and efficiently as possible. But just to speak specifically about the transcript issues with Focus, I think it was very important that we did come together and really, A, identify all the issues involved. Mr. Miller and his staff did do, once we met, a great job of identifying very specific issues, and I was able to kind of translate them into a language that Focus programmers would be able to understand to really correct the issues. And we were able to resolve some things very quickly. And like Mr. Miller said, to my knowledge, that most, if not all, the programming issues are resolved. We are finding a few data issues related to course catalog. We have enlisted a couple of the high school counselors to assist us going through that, making sure we're going all the way back five years to even make sure that the seniors, seniors, the middle school classes that they could have taken to get high school credit are correct in the course catalog. So, that will certainly be a process that we will be refining and getting cleaned up before we, or before we start generating any official.
Any opportunity on the spot here, is there any anticipated date that we believe the transcript issue will finally be resolved?
It will be a matter of getting the, once the high school staff have the opportunity to completely review the course catalog, and once we commit those changes to the system. And then, that will take care of the vast majority, I suspect, just because of the nature of data conversion from one system to another and some residual problems that may have existed long before. We'll probably still have a few minor data issues, but we'll certainly be able to identify and correct those quickly.
And that's what you were speaking about in what, this is a start or an after?
Yes.
So, certainly by, you know, December school year, we should have all the issues all corrected, hopefully taken care of.
Our timeline for correcting all course catalog data is, yes, certainly by then.
Is there any type of data integrity being done on it, as far as reviewing?
In retrospect, yes. And of course, I've been with the district a short amount of time. It does not appear that there has been a ton done in the past, and plus accomplishing anything when you transfer all your data from one system to another. So, we are going back, and that's part of the reason why we're having multiple counselors reviewing the information to make sure that's correct. And then, I'll work with them to run reports and make sure that every student that has taken one of those courses gets the appropriate coding and credit and show their engagement.
So, we have some validation mechanisms in place, so that?
Yes.
Okay, so a validation will occur. I think that was an important piece that was missing last time, data validation. To ensure that the data was actually correct from one system to the next system, to ensure that the students got the proper transcripts that they wanted to be in place. So, that's good to know. And we did have assistance from Focus with some programming things.
Yes, there is only so much that I have access to change. Kind of the proprietary inner workings of how the transcript actually shows up is kind of closely guarded by Focus, and their programs actually have to adjust that. But once we were able to clearly communicate programming issues, we were able to turn those around and get those solved.
Good. Same to you, Trip.
So, Focus did get involved and make some corrections for you?
Yes.
So, you made a comment that we don't need to worry about the transcripts for a little bit, because it's, you know, official transcripts. But July 1st is early admissions, so our current seniors are applying for college now. So, they do need transcripts. So, let's not, let's not sit on it, because, I mean, I've got a daughter that's a senior who's already applied for college, so we do need to be prepared.
Right. This is something that needs to be given great attention once school gets started, and I'm confident it can be completed by December.
And I do appreciate all the work. I know it's been tons and tons and tons of overtime and tons of work. My other question is, so with everything that we've been through with Focus, and we're one of two in the state of Texas, two school districts that use it? In your professional opinion, is it worth it to keep it? Or do we go, or should we, I mean, if we continue having problems, do we go back to region 11 and use what we had?
That is an excellent question. Just to give you a little bit of background about myself, so you know where I'm coming from. I grew up in the state of Texas. I moved and spent eight years in the state of Oregon, doing virtually the same thing in two different school districts there. I actually had the opportunity to serve on a panel when the state of Oregon re-shows their student information system. And I got to demo over thirty-six different student information systems that are considered the best in the country at the time, two years ago. As far as functionality goes, Focus ranks up there with all that I've seen, as far as functionality goes. My concern, just because I've overseen two different student information system implementations, I, and I'm still getting information, because I knew the district, I think the timeline which it was implemented may have contributed to some of the issues that we're having. And I know that there were some, there were, I think the staff member that was outrunning in the position before me took some knowledge with that, with her. I think there was a little bit of catch-up there. But I would say that, and certainly there were some problems specifically can be attributed to Focus and their programming, but I would say there are some other problems that are just as much data errors and things that could have potentially been prevented. At this moment in time, I certainly wouldn't recommend changing. I think I still need to learn more about the system and learn, and get a few more things fixed before I can make any kind of very definite recommendation. And I certainly wouldn't, at this point, look for something else.
Thank you. It's great, great question.
Thank you for your efforts. We know you kind of got slammed with that one.
Yeah, thank you.
We noticed an important aspect, and we move far, actually relatively fast. Since our last meeting, this is, this is a lot of progress that's been taking towards the transcript issue, and we appreciate that effort.
Our next update is from Cindy Mika, and she's going to provide a quick update on parent anti-bullying training.
Okay, the board had asked at the last meeting that we update you on our parenting classes for anti-bullying. And I just want you to know that LEISD is planning a parent university in mid to late October. And it's going to be held in a conference style. We have had parenting classes for bullying, but what we have noticed is that we have very low enrollment in those classes. And one of the things that we're worried about is the stigma associated with it. Also, we've offered drug awareness classes, and the attendance is low. And so, we wanted to try something that was more conference-style, with a variety of courses that would be offered, or sessions that would be offered, and reduce the stigma of attending one specific session. And so, we're going to be trying this in mid-October. And we are going to be reaching out to our community. We'll be reaching out to the Little Elm Police Department. We'll be reaching out to MHMR. We'll be reaching out to Greater Dallas Council of Drug Abuse. Judge DiPiazza, our JP, has already agreed to this concept and has agreed to do a class for us. And so, just some of the topics that we're thinking about doing. And once we call everyone together that we would like to help us with this, we'd like to do something on drug and alcohol awareness. We'd like to do something on gang awareness. We'd like to do something on self-harm, children that self-harm. We'd like to do a bullying awareness. We would like to do a cyberbullying awareness session. And Judge DiPiazza has agreed to do apparent responsibilities under the law session for us. And so, these are some ideas that we've generated. Once we get the committee together, once everyone's back on staff, we'll be working with Shaq, we'll be working with community and schools, and we'll be working with our LEISD parent liaison. And then, we'll be asking for the help of some of our other community organizations to come in and help us plan this. And so, that's our goal. Additionally, once all the counselors are back on staff, I'll be working with them directly on anti-bullying, and we'll be asking them to work with their PTAs as well. Because the parents will come to a PTA concert, and so, that would be a great time to do a quick anti-bullying session from the counselor's perspective. And so, we'll be working with the counselors and the principals on tapping into some of those events that all parents come to the school for, and seeing if we can't have a few minutes to talk then about anti-bullying.
I'll break this one open, because it was kind of my request. Some of the things I was wanting to really, like all the ideas I like that we're bringing more stuff to the board, that there's going to be a parent conference. I was really hoping to get more down into the policy of how we have our administrators and how they handle bullying situations, maybe some more educational resources also for the teachers on how to handle them. How are we disciplining them? How are we even putting out that it's happening so that it can stop? It seems to be popping up over and over, and one person calls it bullying, another person calls it drama. Are, you know, what do we have in place so teachers can clear? I know it is a big gray area, but do we have training? Do we have a policy in place that can help our administrators and staff say, hey, no, this is definitely over on this side, or this is over here, you know, how we're going to handle it? Because I think we're missing it somewhere. And I mean, I don't have an answer. I always fall back to Plano, because I've actually read theirs. But if we can, I still don't, I don't want you stopping what you're doing, because any progress to me right now, I think is good. But I would like to get a deeper look into how we're actually handling situations as they arise.
And myself, I, myself and then some other staff members are actually going to training on bullying on a Saturday coming up in August. And so, we are going to be going over to region 10 for some specific bullying training. And so, then I'll be bringing that back along with the staff members that are going with me. And so, we will be addressing this. This is one of the items that Mr. Gutierrez has given you.
And when she does that, she'll be able to look at and bring and present the protocols and procedures that the campus admin uses to identify whether bullying has taken place. So, I think, after they have an opportunity to go through that extensive training and be able to really effectively evaluate what we have in place and bring it forward to share with.
Okay, then you're on the phone. Thank you.
So, more or less, a train-to-train type of thing? If you're training, you guys will come back with some type of program to train the teachers, et cetera, on program?
And if this training doesn't do it for us, then we'll continue looking for other training, but we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Important to the community, of course, with bullying policies, and make sure we have that in place.
Our next update is from Human Resources, our interim director of human resources, Leota Epps.
Good evening, everyone. Talk to you a little bit about what's going on in human resources, and the next slide. There we go. Okay, the vacancy report. This just gives you an outline of what our current vacancies are across the district. We have a toximally nearing 800 teachers, and currently, we have nineteen openings. These openings are all in the process of being filled. They've all been posted, many of them already in the interview process, and we are waiting for completion of HR processing to fill the positions. For an administration update, we have assistant superintendent learning and leadership position still rests open. The Little Elm High School principal position, we have completed interviews, and that position is going to go forward in recommendation. The Little Elm High School assistant principal position, also, interviews have been completed, and that will go forward in recommendation. Lakeside Middle School principal, we're going to be recommending an interim person to fill that position. Same with Hackberry principal, as those interviews commence and take place over the next couple of weeks. And then, we have, we're currently interviewing for the communications specialist within the administration. Questions?
Ms. Epps, can you tell me who sat on the committees, or what positions, rather than the names of who sat on the committee for the principal interviews?
Yes, ma'am. We did it a little bit wider this year. We have started with district administration. For example, we did like special ed, general populations. I sat on the human committee as well. There was also, at campus level, we had paraprofessional, we had teachers, counselor, athletics. We tried to do a really broad spectrum so that we touched all areas. And this year, we also had community members that we put on the interview committee, so that we would have a really wide sampling. And if I could speak a little bit beyond that, we also took the vision and the mission of the district, along with the campus improvement plan, along with the survey that we put out to the general... to the general public as to what they'd like to see in a high school principal, in addition to another survey that was issued to the in-house staff of what they liked to see in a principal. And we took as much as we could to deliberate after, you know, we had interviewed through all the candidates, and it was a little more rigorous than I sat on the last committee, so I can tell you it was a little more rigorous than it had been in the past. And we took all this information to deliberation so that we felt we could truly align with the goals of our community, our in-house staff, the district, just a much wider range of input.
Was it the same committee that were both assistant principal and principal, or two separate committees?
No, ma'am. Two separate committees.
And were both committees made up the same way?
I did not host the assistant principal committee, and I do not believe there was a community member on that particular committee, but at the, at the principal level, there definitely were a couple of community members.
Could you explain a little bit in the past how we do it versus what we're doing now?
Yes, sir. The last time I sat on a principal committee, it was heavily slated toward administration central office, and it had a sampling of teachers, and I believe an athletics person at administration level also. The last committee I sat on did not have any community members, which was an addition we felt was important to make.
How did you pick a community member?
We had, tried to look through a list of names that different people from the campus, you know, submitted that here's a couple of people I know, and here's a couple more people that we know, and we tried to look through there, and then we ended up selecting someone that we felt had a broader tie to the community, without telling you the person's name here, that truly had experience in the district, and then had gone on to work in the community for several years, so they had a broad knowledge base to work from.
So we had a little bit more, more experience, as well as a broader look at interviewing candidates from a different perspective, both the community, the schools, the teachers, all looking at these candidates, our candidates that were coming into the pool, to pull the best candidates.
And we changed it a little bit in that we had a preview system that we had not used prior. The pre-screening system was a series of questions that each was asked that literally has a score that defines their belief system in a way, you know, their philosophy of education, leadership style, management style, many, many components that pulled in. And so we had, I believe, sixty-four applicants for the principal position. And then from those, the screening brought forth eleven that met a pretty high standard. And we interviewed, we offered interview to all eleven.
So sixty-four candidates?
Sixty-four candidates, yes, sir.
From around, from around the Dallas, around Dallas metro?
Heavily slated to the metro, but also, you know, different parts of Texas. And so we, we really did a lot of depth in this interview process. We also did the breadth in that we wanted to go broader with community, adding community members and adding paraprofessionals where that had not been done before, to try to get a really healthy sampling for many different aspects of the high school. But I think, I think the pre-screening was huge, I think bringing in the community was huge, really aligning it with our vision statement, the campus improvement plan, things that we had professed that we saw as really neat. So the committee was instructed to align their choices with the outline, the outlet needs of the community that had been well expressed from, from different areas, from the different surveys, from the campus improvement plan. But in addition to that, just the interview process, we sent them home with homework. They were given twenty-four hours, and we're not giving a long time to produce, because we wanted to see really what, you know, what was in their heart, what they could produce. So they were sent home with homework that they had to come back and hand in, they were required to bring in a presentation of their entry plan to the high school, what steps they would take.
So it sounded like this, this process was a lot more depth than even our last process, gave you a lot more information.
Kind of to address, sorry, to address some of the concerns, because I know people, they want to know what the plan is, what the strategy is, and they don't understand, the board really doesn't hire principals, that really comes from the administration. And so I know that Mr. Gutierrez at the beginning of this year, he really did, he just, he took our recruiting process, he streamlined it, he brought in a lot of, kind of let him speak on a little bit if he doesn't mind, just what he did do, because it went from a very simple, very difficult recruiting thing, managed something now, we're open, we're getting people from all over the district, and that really has streamlined and helped us get to where we had sixty-four people that even applied for the position.
Right, and I think just a few years ago, some of you in here can probably remember where you were looking at eight people for a vacancy. And so we are still in a position to where there is still a lot of interest in our district because of the initiatives that are, again, people recognize the technology that we have to offer our teachers and our students, they recognize the initiatives such as PBL, the Learning Academy, so there is still a lot of interest in our school district, and we're even seeing that with the vacancies that are currently posted right now, that there is some strong interest in the Hackberry Elementary and Lakeside Middle School vacancy as well. The pre-screener that Mrs. Depps was talking about, we began implementing and I shared with the board around December or January, we began implementing and utilizing for not only administrators, but teachers and paraprofessional, paraprofessionals. It's a good tool to really predict the performance of the individual that's going to be joining our district. And so we certainly utilize that tool because we pay money for it, and, and it has been a very useful tool. I've received positive feedback from campus administrators, we utilize it for administrators. The process that Mrs. Depps has spoken about, which is very rigorous and intense for someone who is going through the process, is going to be the same for Hackberry and Lakeside to ensure that the district gets a quality stellar, a rock star, I guess I should say, in that position.
That's great. We also have some other things which are in the interview process, which we use, excellent reviews now, there's other things that we use.
Right, and there are other things that, that the committee looks at. There is a survey that has gone out to Hackberry and Lakeside community members to provide feedback. There will be another survey that's going to go out in the connect newsletter from Julie Suar, in which community members will be able to submit interest in participating on the interview committee. Now know that there may be a hundred and fifty people that want to sit in on Hackberry, and two hundred that want to sit in on Lakeside. We only have limited spacing, and it is going to be random, but that will be going out this week as well. We really want to continue to streamline the processes to ensure we get quality, but also get as much community input as we possibly can, so that not only the administration, but the community yourselves can have ownership of bringing in the administration.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you very much. That's a great question.
President, do you have one for interaction between the board and the audience?
Not at this point. No.
Even on one actual items?
That's what we go later on, more like public. I promise. All right. Communication, please. And we actually, it's.
Yeah.
Next, our next session.
Okay, our next update is going to be from our assistant superintendent of business operations, Linda.
Mr. Timerson, the board, Mr. Gutierrez. I was asked to present a budget update this evening relating to our 2014-2015 budget that we have proposed. That's the wrong slideshow. It's on budget. Thank you. Just to give you a little bit of information about where we are at in the budget process, we start our budget process, in our office, it's a year-round process, we're constantly looking at the budget from the year that we're currently in, and estimating and projecting to make sure that our revenues, our expenditures are where they should be. But formally, the board adopts a budget calendar in February, and then after that, we start doing budget projections as to what our revenues will be in the upcoming year, based on what we think our average daily attendance of our students will be, as well as our property values, how they will be looking. And as you can hear from the information that they've provided to you relating to the STEM, we are looking at a fairly significant increase in our certified values of our properties, which helps us mostly on our debt side. But we have completed, we have performed a budget, a budget update at our March, April, May, and June meeting, so that's why this one is going to be pretty concise, you know, I know that, you know, we've been here for a while, and we're still in updates, so, you know, I'm going to try, if there are any questions, the board will certainly answer them, but most of this information they have seen. Our revenue picture on the, from the general fund, and the board adopts the general fund, the debt service fund, and the child nutrition funds. Those are the three funds that the board adopts by statute. We calculate our local revenue, our, from our local property taxes, other local sources like interest on our investments, rental fees of our facilities, et cetera. We also receive funds from the state, based again, based on our ADA, as well as our collection efforts on our property tax side. We also receive a little federal funds in the general fund area, and that comes from our impact aid, as well as some Medicare reimbursement. So for fourteen-fifteen year, we are looking at a revenue picture of forty-nine point four million dollars coming in. Also, you'll see that we have noted on here in the tribute HOA, as part of the agreement that the district entered into with the HOA agreement, when we open the STEM in August, hopefully we're going to open it the week of August eighteenth for our staff, where they can have open house on the twenty-first, that's our goal. But certainly what we want to have upon August twenty-fifth, when students are coming back. According to the contract, that when we do that, then we will receive five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the HOA in September, and then we'll receive another five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in April fifteen. And again, the agreement continues on to where we receive funds from that particular organization out several, several years. Also, the board approved back in April or May, the compensation plan for our staff. We adopted a no change in our hiring schedule as far as our pay grades are concerned, or the teacher hiring schedule as teachers are coming in, but the board approved a four percent of midpoint for all staff in our district for the fourteen-fifteen school year, and for teachers, that equaled a two thousand and ten dollar raise per year for fourteen-fifteen. When we look at the, on the expenditure side, we calculate payroll first, because once the board has adopted the compensation plan, then we can actually determine how much this fund has cost the district for our, for pay for the next year, and you'll see that is forty million five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars is in salaries. The campuses, we do training with our budget managers, we do pretty much a zero-based budgeting for our campus, and our campuses receive an allocation per student and per student population. They receive an allocation for regular education students coming in, as well as if they have a bi-legal program, or if they have other types of special populations, they receive additional allocations for those. But on the budget for fourteen-fifteen, you'll see that our campus department budget equaled about eighteen percent at nine point one, and our salaries with four percent of midpoint came in at eighteen percent. You know, when you look at the eighteen percent, because people always question what you do with the budget or how you budget, so if you really look at that budget, eighty-two percent of our budget is payroll, so the other eighteen percent, we say, well, how much flexibility do we really have as staff to allocate funds? So I always look at your overhead costs, because our overhead costs are things that we reoccur every, every year, and there's really not a whole lot of flexibility, other than we try to be as effective and efficient in those areas as possible to save funds of those. But as you'll see, we have about seven point eight million of the nine point one that has to do with overhead, it has to do with our, the Denton County appraisal district that appraises our property and also collects our taxes, our utilities, our insurance, our transportation, on all those areas. So when we break it down, if you will, by object, we have payroll, we have contracted services, we have supplies, we have miscellaneous expense, we have a little bit of debt payment out of the general fund, and that really relates to the payment we have for the buses that we purchased at the beginning of the thirteen, fourteen years. It's a lease payment, so therefore it is out of general fund, it's not on the debt side, or out of Fund 511, as well as the board authorized some tax maintenance notes in order to do the renovations on the middle school. And so we are repaying that, those funds that we draw to accomplish the mission of the board, in that capacity, they are eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, and there's a little bit of capital. So our expenditure budget that we are projecting and proposing at this time is right at forty-nine point eight million dollars. If you look at it from a graph, you can see eighty-two percent is payroll, contracted services, again, which is mostly your overhead, is ten percent as far as contracted utilities, lights, insurance, transportation, that's your contracted services. The supplies are typically supplies from the classroom, paper primarily, a lot of paper. Miscellaneous has to do with our fees dues and other miscellaneous awards and things of that nature that are paid us, miscellaneous or six to four hundred. Again, that debt payment and then a little bit of capital. It's broken down by function, by statute, the board has to adopt our budget by function, these are our major function. Strictly instruction, which is eleven, by function, is thirty million nine hundred thousand dollars. Instructional leadership will be your campus leaderships, function twenty-two, twenty-one, is four million dollars. Your student services will be your function thirty-four, transportation, thirty-six, your extracurricular, as well as your health services and your counselors. And general administration will be your administrative staff, primarily central office, anyone in function forty-one. Then we have facilities, technologies, technology and securities, which is function twenty-two, twenty-three. We have some community services, which is our CIS partnership that we have, where we contribute to the teaching salary of the staff that service, serve our district through campuses. Again, if you look at that, you know, the most important thing about this, we're spending sixty-two percent of the expenditure budget on instruction. So that's a good number, that's a pretty significant number that we spend on instruction, pure instruction. And then your instructional leadership is another eight percent. But that just tells you that the focus of the budget expenditure line items is instruction. Our total revenues for fourteen-fifteen are estimated at forty-nine point four, our total expenditures are forty-nine point seven, so we are presenting a deficit budget as far as just local revenues and expenditures. Then, of course, if you look at our other sources from an accounting perspective, the other sources from the homeowners association, I'm naming one, then you end up really with an overall positive effect of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Again, the board approves three, three different funds, the debt service, the debt service is the bonded indebtedness, the Jewish constituents, and the board has approved for us to build buildings primarily, and you'll see that that's our local revenue picture from local taxes, as far as other sources, and the state still contributes a little bit in this area. So our total revenue picture is eleven point three million dollars. Our debt payment for fourteen-fifteen is three, a little over three million in principal, a little over eight million in interest, and a couple, and twenty thousand dollars of fees at the back. So again, our expenditures for the debt side for fourteen-fifteen is, will be eleven point three million dollars, because that is a set number. So to recap, we are presenting a balanced budget relating to Fund 511, we anticipate getting in eleven point three million dollars, and we will spend eleven point three million dollars to pay for our debt. So later in the budget, later in the meeting, we'll be asking the board to set a date, time, and place for a public discussion relating to the budget and the proposed tax rate. That information will be this, the general fund will be M and O, we would be recommending for the general fund budget at forty-nine point eight, and the debt service budget of eleven point three, at the proposed tax rate, or our maintenance and operations side, which is our operational side of the debt, of our tax rate, at a dollar four, at a proposed debt side rate, or INS, at fifty cents, for a total proposed tax rate for the fourteen-fifteen school year of a dollar fifty-four. Then finally, our child nutrition budget is Fund 240, and you'll see that we receive, we collect, if you will, or kind of our own enterprise on, as well as feeding all of our kids, the local revenue comes in, one point one million dollars is what we're estimating based on the number of meals we anticipate selling and serving in fourteen-fifteen. We receive little state funds primarily, and a lot of federal dollars based on our free and reduced lunch programs, for a total revenue of two point eight million dollars. Again, broken down by categories, our payroll will be about one point one, our contracted services is a little over a hundred thousand, our supplies, in order to be able to prepare all the food and service that is served, is about one point five, a little bit of miscellaneous for, again, expenditures of two point eight. So again, we would be presenting to the board a balanced budget in the child nutrition area of two point eight. We combine all three funds when we report, our general fund at forty-nine point eight, if you will, because we report on expenditures, the debt side at eleven point three, and child nutrition at two, two point eight, for a combined budget for the district of sixty-nine, sixty-three point nine million dollars. The timeline is July, we will ask the board to set a date, time, and place to discuss the proposed budget tax rate. July twenty-fifth, we receive our certified values that actually tell us exactly what our values will be. There'll be some of your protests, but pretty much during certify our values. And then we will readjust if it's significant, and then bring that back to the board. And then in August, we would present the, we would have a public hearing at six forty-five to allow public input relating to this. And then we would move forward requesting the board adopt our budget and our tax rate as our fiscal year starts September one through August thirty-first. Any questions relating to the budget update?
Surprise, right? Back on slide eleven, so going back quite a ways, it's the budget workshop to fourteen fifteen general fund. Right?
Revenue expenditures.
Ten.
Now it's the, slide ten, slide eleven online. It's the one where you, you've got the over-under of three twelve, two nine, twenty-nine.
Right before debt service. It's just general fund, any of the, after these items.
I'm a simple man, and I like round math and round numbers. And I realize we've had numerous conversations about the corporate world being different from an education world. Seeing that I like round numbers, I'd like to challenge, and with the support of the board, I'd like to challenge you and Matthew to take that negative three twelve, two ninety-two and bring it to two hundred. We need to sharpen up, you know, we, I understand that there's, that expenses go up and prices go up, but I think, you know, we need to just sharpen our pencils and find some way to take out a hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I think we need to just tighten our belt, we can't continue to, to spend more than we take in.
Mr. Biegus, we'll certainly do that. Just, just remember that eighty-two percent of our budget is payroll. So, you know, that is where, you know, any time that I'm looking for saving money at the district, the majority of the time, we look for savings, we need to look at our staffing, we need to look at our payroll numbers, because that's where, that's where our dollars are. But we will certainly go back and look at our non-payroll items and see if there's anything in that area that we could possibly reduce and bring back for your consideration.
Something we can renegotiate with. Utilities can be tightened, but, you know, just be creative, and let's find some way to cut that number down a little bit. Please, if I have support of the board, just.
I think, I think last one asked about the operational efficiencies that potentially gain somewhere down the line. Anywhere we can gain, yeah. Any operational efficiencies we potentially can gain anywhere. And I think that's what you're asking.
Perhaps if we're looking at staffing, we could look at the movement of, if we lost three hundred kids from the junior high and went over to the STEM, make sure that the junior high staff is appropriately, we wanna make sure they're staff appropriately, but make sure that they're not overstaffed.
And I understand my kids come to junior high, I know that's never happened, but if we could just make sure that everything's covered.
Next, next up is the business and operations, start of school logistics.
Yes, Mr. Biegus, the board and Mr. Biegus. You know, a lot of times, people think business and operations is just the finance department. And I'm just telling you that I wanted to introduce to you the operations side of the business and operation department, with a little M I S D. You know, first of all, we have Carol Tarver, who is our director of child nutrition, and who has done an outstanding job as the director for the years that she's been with us. We also have Danny Cogdell, who is over our maintenance department, who serves our district very well every day. He was out mowing.
Do you understand, so we know?
Please do. Yeah, he was out, he was out mowing in front of our offices today. So he does whatever it takes. We have Jonathan Preston, who actually oversees our transportation department. Even though we outsource the management of our, of our service, the management services of our transportation department, he and his staff really are under our umbrella, and we work very collaboratively and closely together to try to make sure we get every kid to school on time and home in a reasonable hour. We try that, we try.
And a certain time limit.
We also have, what should be known, Rod Reeves, the director of facilities and construction, as well as we have Joel Moses, and most of you know Joel Moses. I would hope you've been in Little Elm for any period of time of all. He has watched Sheba, they've been here forever. He is over our custodial staff, and I can tell you that if you ever need anything, I know if I ever need anything, I know that I could call Joel, and Joel would come and help. He really would. I don't want to overlook Susan Henderson, who is a business service coordinator, and she is really over the payroll and all of the benefits. And benefits, making sure we try to, how the new hires have benefits, as well as all our existing staff have the benefits that they need. As well as, as well as get paid every month, and pay the cracked amount of money. This person here is the person who makes sure that happens. And so that's the, the operations and that. And, you know, I want you to know that we have been working very, very hard, because I count four weeks, because I count weekends. And then twenty-five days for me, we got four weeks to get things ready for school to start. And we have, so things that we've done this summer, because we work all summer long. This is my twenty-fifth year in education, and people that I know have known for twenty years still ask me what I do in the summer, you know, because I'm off. And I, we have never been off in the summer, but they still ask me this. So typically, in the finance area of business and operations, we make sure you get salary letters out in May, because we think it's really, really important that you know what you're gonna make next year. I think there's a level of stability and comfort whenever you know whatever it is that it's going to be. So those issues were, those letters were issues with the issue with the pay raises. Beginning August first, you know, the benefit hub will be open. It'll be open through August the twenty-second, so all of our employees will be able to go in and make their benefit election electronically. So please make note of those dates, August first to the twenty-second. We also bid, if you will, go out for bid for our insurance coverages, and we have property and casualty. We have a whole list of coverages of insurance that we as school districts purchase. We use a contract for three years with that, we go out for bid. That contract is good for three years, this is the third year of our three-year contract. And I'm really pleased to say that we've been able to decrease those premiums by forty-six thousand dollars for fourteen fifteen school year. So Cooper's, there's your, there's forty-six. You know, as communicated in the budget update presentation, we will be asking the board to approve our fourteen fifteen budget on the eighteenth. And just as soon as the board approves this budget, we roll that information into our financial system. And we still use Texas for, for the, for the finance, as well as the HR of our, of the district. We'll roll it into the finance department, as well as we'll open up next year requisitions to staff out on campuses. And if anybody's out here from campuses, you all know exactly what that means. You can start entering those purchase order requisitions to get things by September one. Not before September, but September one. Now, we have forty-two employees in our transportation department. We do service, that is serviced through Gold Star, so they're not technically our employees, they're employees of Gold Star. We transport approximately fifty percent of our students twice a day to and from school. And if you don't think that is a major job, it's hard for us to get one kid to school personally, but we try to get fifty percent of our student population factors of course twice, twice a day. We're scheduling forty routes right at the moment to facilitate the need of opening the STEM Academy. That's five additional ones from this year, currently, we're running thirty-five routes. We, as previously discussed at board meetings, are going to rent five additional buses to facilitate the additional route needs, at a base cost of two hundred and thirty-five dollars per day, per bus, which we also intend to absorb within our transportation budget. And that comes to a couple hundred thousand dollars, so we're enjoying that currently in our additional hours. You know, we are uploading the student database route information. People wanna know when they can go on our website and find out what bus their kid rides, where the stop's gonna be, what time they're gonna pick them up, and when they're gonna pick them up and deliver them. Well, we have to have valid student databases in order to do that. We are currently uploading the student database information, the most current that we have. We are gonna test it all this week and try to identify any problems before we actually open it up to the parents for them to access. We wanna try to make sure we work out all the big keys of it. But if you have a goal, we always have a goal, we always have a plan. You know, we have a plan and a goal to upload this program and have it running the second week of August, so that you as parents can access the program and determine just that information that I know all of you need, in order to make sure your students, your kids get to school when they need to be. So we want them to determine the bus, the stop location, and the time for the pickup and delivery. And also, we will have, now I assure you, we had staff out at the campus open house events, but the feedback was we didn't have enough people there to answer all of the inquiries that were, that parents had, so we were gonna try to beef that up and try to have enough staff out there answering questions relating to transportation. We have sixty-five employees in our child nutrition department, and I can tell you, if none of you have worked in the kitchen at one of our cafeterias, then I, I challenge you to volunteer, because they work very hard. They're a great group of women, primarily women. They're a great group of people that really work, that love kids and take care of them every day. We have lots of inspections that are required. I don't think anybody understands how we're regulated, that we have, all of our inspections have been completed, we're ready for school, as well as the fact we've installed a new backup freezer for, at the middle school before they're doing some renovations. Carol Tarver and her staff have updated the K-12 menus in accordance with the new nutrition regulations for fourteen fifteen, and they were voluminous. Every menu had to be redone, everything, because of the changes. We have also arranged for our food vendors to deliver starting August the first, to be ready for school. There's nothing worse to come to school and have no food. That'd be bad. We've completed the annual TDA commodity agreement for fourteen fifteen, and we receive about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of commodities each year. We've also completed the TDA child nutrition program agreement, and we, and we just opened this up. You know, you open up the meeting, we've already processed eighty-six free and reduced lunch applications. It's an ongoing process through the, throughout the year. For thirteen fourteen, we processed a little over fourteen hundred free and reduced applications, and serve over thirty-six hundred students that receive benefit through that program. Our practice in this district, and I don't usually tell the whole world this, because it can cost us a lot of money, but our practice has always been, in this district, to feed every child the first two weeks of school, regardless of whether they have any money on their accounts or not.
And just for the record, I'm not asking for that money. You understand, that's good, she can hold on to that one.
Well, I'm gonna put it on the credit side.
Yes, okay. You wanted some of my critical efficiencies, there you go.
I'm not touching that one.
Yeah, but, you know, when it comes to kids, I'm telling you, the first couple of weeks of kids at school, lots of times they're really timid, especially at that level. And the last thing we wanna do is to come up to register and not know whether they have any money or not for their breakfast or lunch, and so that has just always been the practice. And I can tell you that it's served our, served our district very, very well. Child nutrition staff, they will also attend the campus open house event so that the parents can assist with prepayment options, because, you know, you can pay with credit card. I mean, we take anything around here, you know, we get all kinds of options you can use for prepayment options, as well as try to help people understand the eligibility for free and reduced lunch. It really benefits the entire district. If an individual or parent or family are eligible for free and reduced, because that's good for you and the family, but it also helps us, helps us in the area of our compensatory ed. Our compensatory ed dollars are based upon our free and reduced, so it really helps all students. If you qualify for free and reduced, then you should fill out the form and take advantage of it, because it helps the, all students of our district when you do that. In the, we have sixty-six employees in maintenance grounds and custodial. You know, all the staff, I can tell you, this group of people out here, all they've done is move stuff. Y'all have, I mean, they have, all we've done is moved stuff since school got out. You know, we moved desk and chairs from the middle schools in Zellers over to King. We moved desk and chairs everywhere, I mean, it's a, it's a logistical nightmare trying to. And I can tell you, Mrs. Jones wants her same desk back. Now, we can't really do that, I want you to know that. But if, if, if we really could, we really would be superheroes, but we really can't. But we actually, the move to the, of the child nutrition department, the childcare department, and the DA, EBA's and goals, we've had that move from King to the new repurposed Zellers, that'll be completed by July twenty-sixth. We already have child nutrition at the Zellers, look, they, they're cogged and it's happened. Those guys were hard at moving childcare from King over to Zellers today. And if you, any of you know Lisa Hooton, you know that Lisa Hooton has a lot of stuff. So it's gonna take a couple days to do that. So we've given ourselves until July twenty-sixth to facilitate that. We also pick up teaching materials, you're welcome, as we all love you. We will pick up teacher materials and supplies throughout the district and deliver them to press room in the week of July twenty-eighth to August the first. And we have a lot of staff, a lot of teaching staff from a lot of our campuses that are going to Zellers, and so they have diligently put their names on a bunch of boxes and said they, this is all their stuff. And these guys, again, are gonna pick all that up and deliver it to the classrooms at wherever they are, wherever they're reassigned to. And we hope to get that accomplished all through July, the twenty-eighth and August first. We have coordinated the plan of replacement, all the furniture we took out at the middle school to put it back in the newly renovated middle school by August the eighth, because it won't be in the same place, but we wanna put it back where that staff needs it. We've also scheduled for the ground staff to manicure our campus ground prior to registration, August the fifth, open house, August twenty-third, and the start of school. Because there's nothing that says anything about our district that when you pull up to the campus that day to meet your teachers and register, and we have grass a foot high. So our guys here know, that's why Danny was mowing today. He knows that we really have to have a plan to make sure that we do everything we can do, even though they are all very busy to make sure we do that, because appearances do count. And I really wanna thank, you know, our custodial staff, again, Joel Moses and his staff, you know, they're custodians, but they have done a phenomenal job of readying our facilities for fourteen fifteen whenever we have all kinds of summer changes going on, and all kinds of uses of our facilities during the summer. So we really wanna thank them, because they are masters of all things, I've decided. So, in total, you'll see that there's about a hundred, one hundred and eighty-three individuals or employees under the supervision of Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations. We have three employees really in plant services, which are directly, Rod oversees numerous of these people. But in his over office, Mr. Reeves is the director of facilities and construction, and he will give you an update on our construction process progress, where we're at, make sure we're meeting our deadlines. But before we do that, if there are any questions about anything relating to operations, you have everybody here that knows everything about it, right here. So if there are any questions, feel free to ask them. If there are not, Rod will update you when we get to our construction.
And which one question about trash pickup, you know, just around the campus litter? How is that conducted?
You know, they actually usually do that. Andy, you respond to that?
Well, we really try to place it as much as we can. It is part of the mowing around regiment when they're at the campus. Obviously, you know, we're about ten days from the time we leave a campus and come back before we can get to it, but I have people that are at the building, whether it's, whether it's one of Joel or the custodians or us, where we're moving around and do work wars, they are to look at that. You know, and I know that here, you know, particularly, we do have some issue with the pickup on the hill, it's blowing and things like that, so it's, we try to talk about it and make people more aware, that's what they need to be doing, so.
Thank you very much, you guys, you're doing a great job.
And I'm gonna hold you on time, but we gotta move quick.
I'll go quickly, all right?
Tell you who you are and what you do, because I think a parent might wanna contact you about some construction concerns.
I'm Mr. Reeves, I'm Rod Reeves, I'm director of facilities and construction, so I'm over all the facilities, I've worked with Mr. Moses and Danny Cogdell. And so I'll just give a quick update on that, and so you can always contact me, you can find me on the website, or if your parent's here, they can, I'll give you my cell number after the meeting here. So just a quick construction update here. I'd like to, we talked about the STEM, a lot of people talked about that, but I'm just excited about the middle school at, you know, Lakeside Middle School and Powell. Lakeside Middle School now will be the Arts and Humanities, and Powell will be the Public Service Academy. So if you have not seen it, just come there in August and see it, because it's So if you have not seen it, just come there in August and see it, because it's just as exciting as the STEM, so I just want everybody to know that. So just some pictures, now these pictures are a couple of weeks out, some of them, so don't get scared if you see it, saying, oh, are they going to make it? We're going to make it. So, so this is the library over at the middle school that we've ripped out, we kind of opened up for these just different collaborative areas. What we're trying to do is provide flexibility to the campus staff over time, so as curriculum changes, as staff changes, it just provides flexibility for the district as we move forward. Here's the hallway, we're providing some new flooring, new flooring and painting throughout both facilities. Some of the classrooms have already been turned over. The office area of the middle school has been turned over, so it will be ready for registration early August, which is some good news. Here, we, remember at Powell, we've removed all of the HVAC units, some of them are already running, the three-hundred wing is up and running. We've removed the old chiller system, boiler and chiller system, and replaced it with a split system for better. Here's that front office that is completed, and we are ready. We have the temporary CO, I think the mayor is here. Like, you know, the town, a lot for them working with us, that we meet our deadlines, and so we have our certificate of occupancy for that, so we really appreciate all your help for that.
Do the only thing about it.
So, all right. Tell everybody around there.
Thanks, Mr. Vazquez.
That's right. So just some quick notes, the flooring and painting continues at both facilities, the split system units are in at Powell. We have a new fire suppression system at Lakeside Middle School. The demolition is complete for the new band and choir rooms. We had a temporary CO that we talked about, and we're looking at substantial completion by August the eighth, which means it'll be ready for teachers to come back the following week. Again, we talked about saving some money, Mr. Vegas. Remember that we came with a budget around four billion dollars for this middle school, we came back, it's a little bit over three million, so almost a million dollars in savings based upon working with our consultants to kind of modify the HVAC at the Powell, so that's some other money that we got. And we're going to be ready for teachers' return. So any questions on the middle school? I'm going to go quick, because I'm tired. So let's look at the Preswood Stiv Academy. This is the most recent aerial. We've already started with the landscaping, all the masonry is completed, we're starting to finish out a lot of the interior. We will be ready for school, and it's going to be close, but we will be ready. So I know you were concerned about the word approximately, or, so we will be ready for school.
We should, we should be ready.
We would, all right. Kids are coming regardless, kids are coming regardless. So first and second floor finishes have begun, the architects are punching that as they go to make sure we're staying on top of that. They're making sure that they follow the construction documents. The kitchen equipment has been installed, sidewalks are completed, landscaping is being completed the first week of August, and will be substantially complete August the fifteenth. So, and we'll be ready.
There were a lot of questions that came in about the STEM, whether or not the STEM would be ready.
It's going to be ready.
Make sure you say that really loud.
We're going to be ready.
We're going to be ready.
Now, we might be, you know, sweeping floors on the fifteenth, but we'll be ready.
Have you applied for your certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, we have.
Because that's a different city.
We've already coordinated with the town, we have a meeting tomorrow at two.
Okay.
Just to verify that. And we have Mr. Robert Howman, a civil engineer, that's helping us with that as well. Thank you for that, so. We take a look at Zellers just real quick. We've already moved in the child nutrition area, so if you're familiar with Zellers, the administrative offices will be for child nutrition. And then we also are going to be moving in childcare this week, so Lisa Hooton will be up and running by the following week. So I'm going to just move on from that. Any other questions on Zellers?
How's that budget look?
Well, go over that real quick. So, good question. So these first two, these first two slides are dealing with childcare. So I'm going to go to this next slide, and I'll go back. So remember, we came with the original budget for childcare, we were going to take sixty-four thousand for that. Once we were there, we took a look at some things that we might want to do while we're renovating. And so that list, the other two slides, show a list of exactly, not only the sixty-four thousand, but the additional things we want to do. So we'll be coming back at the following meeting to see if you can allocate additional funds for that.
So the million savings you got me earlier, you want some of that back for this?
That's correct. You got it, you got it. I say please.
There's always a catch.
So I'll go over this list, but you have it there, so you can take a look at it, and if you have any questions, I'll be there, you can answer, or Lisa can answer those for you. Okay, so let's take a look at the Zellers updated project budget. Construction was a hundred and fifty thousand, childcare is now a hundred and ten, carpet you allocated seventy thousand for a total of three hundred and thirty thousand. Okay, any questions?
What was the original that we had budgeted?
A hundred and fifty.
But there were some things that we had to do because of the childcare, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
We knew, we knew we were moving childcare in there.
But then when we got there, there were things that we had to do to, I guess, to comply with the safety.
No, that shouldn't have bothered you diligence.
Absolutely.
Yes, correct.
That's a good point. We might have some, just at, to that point, there may be some disagreement on codes, on what is needed or not needed, so we've worked it out.
So if that requires any due diligence, maybe we'll present that.
That's right, that's right. The transportation facility, we're still working on the plans for that, so we had the complete redraw of the documents, and that is at the cost of the architect, so we're not having to pay it twice. We are value engineering some things, and we're going to probably start that in August or September.
What was the reason for the redraw?
Because of the budget. We have additional projects, we have the practice field at the high school, that is completed, except for the hydro mulch. The refinish of the basketball courts at the high school has just been, the last ceiling has been put on tonight. We have the sound system at the high school, which will be installed next week, I believe. We have the repair at the Little Elm Athletic Complex and the new floor in that Hat Berry Elementary School. That's it? That's it?
Thank you.
That's quick.
Any construction questions?
Right. Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
You've always overseen that construction, is that correct?
Yes.
No administrators at the middle school have ever overseen that?
Well, we've had administrators in the process with us.
Did you always oversee it?
Yes, that's correct, yes. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to thank staff for this superintendent report, and that's really helpful for community to know. At this point, most of the superintendent report, all the things are done, hopefully answered regular questions. At this point, the board recesses and closes executive session in a conference room as permitted by Texas Open Media, subchapter five-five-one dot zero seven four, five-five-one dot zero seven two, and five-five-one dot zero seven one, at nine oh seven.